I'd like to bring this special joint city council and planning commission meeting to order. It's our workshop of July 25, 2023. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call of city council and planning commission.
Okay. And I will start with the city council. Councilmember Kiryako.
Here.
Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Kazdin.
Here.
Mayor Protempore Richards.
Here.
And Mayor Perotti.
Here.
And moving on to the planning commission, Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Fullerton.
Here.
Commissioner Chapman.
Here.
Vice Chair Maynard.
Here.
And Chair Smith.
Here.
Thank you for that. Okay. Public forum. Anything, anyone wishes to speak to anything that's not on our agenda this evening?
I do not have any speaker slips for public forum, but if there are any members of the Zoom webinar who wish to speak on an item not on our agenda tonight, please raise your hand and I will call on you. And I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Amendments or adjustments to our meeting this evening?
None.
None? Okay. Not quite sure who to ask. You'll do. Thank you. Okay. So we're going to, I'm here to welcome the housing, welcome everyone to the Housing Element of 2023 to 2031 Sites Inventory Rezoning Study Session. This session is a continuation of the July 20th study session last week. The proposed site inventory list will be discussed in segments to accommodate potential conflicts of interest under the Political Reform Act, including resulting from proximity to personal residences of certain officials. Staff will identify each site in advance of discussion during the study session to order, in order to allow the opportunity for recusal of any official as may be necessary. The recommendation in the staff report is to provide staff feedback during the city's Staff Revised Housing Element 2023 through 2031 Sites Inventory. We will pick up where we left off from the study session last week and discuss the alternative sites. If there are any comments about sites not included in the candidate or alternate, alternative site list, there will be opportunity for these discussions as well. So if you could read the item into the record, and then I have a little bit more to say.
So Item A1, Continued Housing Element 2023 to 2031 Sites Inventory Rezoning Study Session. This item is a continuation of the joint study session on July 20, 2023. The proposed site inventory may be discussed in segments to accommodate potential conflicts of interest under the Political Reform Act, resulting from proximity to personal residences of certain officials. Staff may identify certain sites in advance of discussion during the study session in order to allow the opportunity for recusal of any, an official as may be necessary.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have, we have Spanish interpretation this evening, and if Carla, if you would come up, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what the process will be.
Hello. Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. Mi nombre es Carla Martens, y para promover el espacio inclusivo estaré proporcionando interpretación simultánea al español. My good afternoon, my name is Carla Martens. In order to promote inclusivity, we will be providing simultaneous interpretation to Spanish, between English and Spanish. Si desea utilizar el equipo de interpretación, lo tenemos disponible aquí en la silla. Recordamos a los oradores que por favor hablen uno a la vez y a un paso moderado. Muchas gracias. Just want to remind anyone who would like interpretation, we've got the equipment right over here. I just want to remind speakers, so please speak one at a time and at a moderate pace. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Okay. At this time, I will go into a little bit more of the process for everyone this evening. Our format for this evening is it typical due to some potential conflicts of interest. To account for that, the staff presentation of this item will be segmented. We have to, we have a list of the alternative inventory sites that will be discussed separately as part of the staff report this evening. Those alternative sites are posted on the screen. Well, I'm not sure they're going to be posted, but I think they might. After discussion of those sites, we will also have an opportunity for council and the commission to discuss other sites for the site inventory list, including possible sites that were not proposed by staff or those candidate or alternative sites already discussed at the study session last Thursday. We also have an opportunity for public comment for each of the sites that were listed on the screen later in the presentation. If anyone would like to comment on any of these lists, listed sites, please note what site you would like to discuss on your speaker slips, and our clerk's office will ensure you are given your opportunity to speak at the appropriate time. Before staff's presentation on those identified sites, we still first take, will take public comment for anything related to the housing element. So any questions about the housing element itself, except the remaining identified alternative sites posted on the screen, or any of the identified candidate or alternative sites discussed at the meeting on July 20 that were posted on the screen. So, so this is, if anybody's confused on that, it took me a while to read this and understand, we'll walk you through it. We're here to help you, and staff is here to help all of us figure this out. So this is a time to provide comments on the housing element content process and next steps. Rena, sites not proposed by staff that someone would like to have considered or similar topics. So, did I get that right, Ms. Wells and Mr. Imhoff?
Yes, you got that right. Thank you.
Okay. So should I turn this over to you at this point to go over the first part?
I think this is the time that you would take that general public comment, if there is any, before we go into the specific slides for the alternatives.
Actual alternative sites.
Yes.
Okay. So at this time, if there's anybody from the public that wants to talk about the process.
Okay. We have two speaker slips for general public comment, and if there are any members of the Zoom webinar who wish to speak on the housing element but not on any of the identified sites, please raise your hand on the Zoom webinar and I'll call on you. Our first speaker in person is Rich Foster.
You should do Dara first so you can get everybody to go home and things will move faster. You know, for countless iterations, our city zoning plan, a lot of parcels saw very little change. Now the staff, having failed at their job to plan, to look to the future, and lay out a means to actually build units that are, address economics and not just unit numbers, we have this helter-skelter rush to destroy portions of our city for the greater good of saving the rest of it. I was told that these proposals only looked at open spaces where the owner expressed an interest in the rezon. One has to wonder why. Why back when we still had time? What about commercial properties that the city didn't reach out to asking the owner if maybe he would like to get his property rezoned because he can't run it anymore? Did staff look around for small parcels? I mean, a house, a property with 10 houses is still 20 units per acre if it's a half-acre parcel, and you can go down to that. And staff reached out to churches. There's some churches around town that have a lot of land behind them. Did anybody introduce a conversation with them to see if we could find more open space? I mean, that way we spread out the congestion and the pain, which has a lot of people here. I mean, did staff even propose, evaluate these sites for their suitability? When I look through the list and I look at some of the stuff, I don't think they spent much time evaluating it compared to the guidelines that they have. It would seem they had some kind of Damascus Road experience where suddenly, you know, R suddenly becomes high D and we multiply what we were planning on having there for the last 20 years by tenfold, and the state's to blame. But the council also has not made a genuine effort to create economically affordable units. All the biggest projects over the last decade were described as workforce housing, yet all ended up being more middle or upper income. There was actually very little for the people at the bottom of the heap. Sucre Gardens is usually mentioned, but that project was 16 years ago, and the city was willing to kick money in on it to make it happen. Los Canarios was done by self-help housing. I have to ask, why do you want to build a million-dollar, multi-million-dollar train stations and a $33 million bike path or new traffic circles when this revenue could be put to make profit of low-income units? What happened to the density levels from 2020 plan? Rezoning a property at high density now is simply a windfall profit for the owner and developer. I mean, the Glanane Golf Course was worth six to seven million two years ago. Now the county has proposed 1,500 houses on it. What do you think they want for it today? If you choose to move forward, create a high-density units, then in exchange for this largesse, you should demand a developer agreement for the change. The owner should sign a contract guaranteeing the units will be half the average local rent. For sale units will be priced at half the current market. And if the project doesn't pencil out due to the construction costs, which is a very real problem on building affordable, then the city and local businesses should be getting some skin in the game on the project, especially business. Right now, your housing plan consists of putting windfall profits in the pockets of some at the expense of our greater community with no guarantee of producing lower rent-cost rentals. It's not really a pen, it's more of a panic sale to avoid a builder's remedy sanction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Karen Lovelace.
I'm just going to say right now, no booing and no clapping. Thank you very much.
Members of the Guelita City Council, the State of California's Housing Element Site Inventory Guidebook dated June 2020 has an example on page 13 for City X, so an example. It reads in part, "Provide adequate sites for low-income households on non-vacant and vacant sites previously identified. Objective: Create opportunity for at least X number of rental housing for low, lower-income households." Responsible agency is Community Development Department. The timeline: Sites rezoned by a specific date no more than three years from the beginning of the planning period. That applies to us. Guelita planning staff schedule events implied that there would be a need for immediate rezon of identified parcels. The city council has three years from the time our housing plan was adopted to rezon parcels. There is still one year left. The council and planning department need only recommend zoning changes, not rezon right away. This action would allow staff to go throughout our city and seek other sites that are smaller or zone commercial and ready to change. This would also allow staff time to evaluate the degree to which a site meets the state's HCD standards for low-income housing. There's no point in making rezones which may not be needed. Reckless haste will only stir anger in our community. Guelita has never built a high-density, low-income project, so why not make every effort to get this right? Council should direct staff to list all of the proposed sites. There are more than enough units to get the housing element passed. You have another year to refine site selections without making panic-driven zoning changes. Or, you could panic, tear Guelita apart, and stir up so much animosity that the community reacts by sending protests and challenges to Tristan Lanza of Housing and Community Development, thus driving you past the February deadline. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final public speaker for general public comment is Dustin Hoyseth. If you can please accept the prompts that are on your screen.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Hello, Mayor Perotti, council members, and planning commissioners. My name is Dustin Hoyseth, Public Policy Manager with Santa Barbara South Coast Chamber of Commerce, representing businesses from Guelita to Carpinteria. I've already sent in two letters on this topic, so I'll try not to be repetitive on the finer points. I do want to reiterate our support for the rezoning of local sites to provide more housing supply for our community, as well as our specific support for the rezoning of the Shelby Site at 7400 Cathedral Oaks. The chamber has long been an advocate for increasing housing stock in our region due to the threat that the housing supply crisis continues to pose to our local economy and business vitality. That is why we created our Road Home document, which identifies various sites that can realistically be built and within a timely manner, which also includes the 7400 Cathedral Oaks site. Our current housing supply crisis calls for quick action, much faster than the eight-year timelines of housing elements. Tonight's question shouldn't be about which sites to rezon and which sites not to rezon to meet the housing element requirements. It should be about which sites we can utilize most efficiently, most efficiently to realize the local housing stock as quickly as possible. Every day we debate these issues, our economy suffers due to our local businesses' struggles to retain talent as a direct result of our region's lack of housing supply at all levels and types of housing. Smart, community-centric planning can still be key while we support any vacant or underutilized sites, with willing property owners being rezoned for housing. We need action now. That is why the chamber is highlighting our support for this site. I would like to again express the chamber's support for, for the Shelby property at 7400 Cathedral Oaks. This is a site with a willing property owner that could be quickly utilized to meet the housing needs of our region. It is unfortunate that this property hasn't been yet included in this discussion. Hopefully, that can change. This site is surrounded by other housing, the golf course, and is right on Cathedral Oaks. Given the location of this site, the property owner's interest in the site's history with the project proposal, it makes perfect sense to consider. We at the chamber highly encourage you to consider the site. We hope this can make it into 2023-2031 Housing Element. As a failure to see included would raise concerns to the community about our local commitment to addressing the housing supply crisis. Thank you for your consideration on the proposed sites tonight.
Thank you.
I also have seven speaker slips for sites that were discussed at the previous meeting.
Okay.
Would you like to hear them now, or?
These are sites that were?
Discussed at the previous meeting.
But aren't on the list. So that, is that coming later and not right now?
I think the way that, that we have this set up is that we would take public comment for things that aren't on the alternatives list that we're going to consider tonight.
Okay. That's coming up next.
So Mayor, just to clarify.
I'm sorry.
We can take comment on sites that staff didn't propose, that were not on the candidate list or the alternative list.
At this point.
At this point in time. And then, oh, council would discuss those at the end.
Okay.
And we'll do the same thing we did at last week's hearing for the alternatives sites and the candidate sites. We'll take those one by one.
Individual.
Allow commission members and council members, if there's a conflict of interest, to recuse yourselves, and then we'll take public comment on each one of those sites individually. And for the public's benefit, that's why we ask that you identify the site you're interested in speaking to on your speaker slip, so that we observe those rules.
Okay. And so what are the speaker slips for?
So we can have these at the end then, based on that.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to make some comments, and then I know that you would like to speak, and Commissioner Maynard and Commissioner Chapman? Did you, you're showing your names up, so I don't know if you pressed your mic or... Okay. All right. So you'd like to speak. I'm just going to make some comments. As mayor, I feel it's important to recognize this important task that we're doing, so I've kind of prepared a few comments that I'd like to say that we understand that this is, that this is required housing element by the California state. We recognize that the housing mandate, state mandates are real, and the failure to comply with these mandates will result in unacceptable impacts to the city of Guelita, primarily loss of vital state funding. But as we have in the past, we've accepted the responsibility for attempting to address the shortage of housing that is affordable. On our own, I need to remind everyone, we have made significant strides to do so, most recently with our approval of Heritage Ridge Project with over 100 affordable units, and Buena Tira Project for 59 residential units for our folks without homes. But still, we need to recognize another mandate, which is respecting and realizing the vision and guidance of Guelita's general plan. The general plan, I call it our North Star, is our guiding light on which our residents want Guelita to be, to become. Our general plan was arrived at with countless public workshops attended by hundreds of Guelita residents and many, many, many hours and many days. It contains valuable criteria that we must respect as we consider individual parcels to help us achieve state housing mandates. This is my personal opinion here. Only some of those criteria include traffic, public safety, and other key services, environmental protections, and maintaining the basic character of our diverse neighborhoods. Guelita is surrounded, we also need to take this into consideration, we are surrounded on all sides by the county's properties, also being considered for housing rezon. We shall, we all share the same roads, water, and air. So much is possible, we need to take, so as much as possible, we need to account likely the housing rezones the county is taking into consideration. But to conclude, let's go forward in the spirit of remaining true to Guelita's general plan as we commit to fulfilling the required state housing mandates. And with that, thank you. Okay. Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a brief comment and then a question, a general question for staff. I really just want to thank the public and their participation and engagement on this. I'm a newer council member, and I truly believe in representative democracy, and that requires your participation and your engagement. We need to hear from you. These discussions are not easy, these decisions are not easy, and we need your input, much like the mayor described, the general plan process was such an engaged process with our residents. So just thank you to everyone who has written, everyone who's here, and everyone who's joining us over Zoom. A question for staff, I asked this on Thursday, but I think with so many potentially new folks engaged with us tonight, there have been a lot of questions about environmental review. So if you could remind us, what is the environmental review process for these rezones? And related to that, what is the process that we are looking at over the next several months? So tonight is straw votes, general direction to staff, and then what comes next? Is there, what is the decision-making process that comes after that?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. And the, the next step, so we'll get public, we'll get your input and straw votes and direction from this evening, we'll integrate any proposed rezoning into the adopted housing element revisions. We will post a draft that will respond to the state's comments, including the proposed rezoning. And then we'll have a 60-day public review period, and then we'll get the state's input back, and then we'll release a planning commission packet that would have our, whatever feedback we got from the state. Hopefully, you know, it's positive. And then we'll readopt, we'll go through the readoption process. And simultaneous with that, so we have, you can, 60 days of a draft review, and then we'll go back to the planning commission and city council, and then the state will require that we give them another 60-day review of what we adopt. So it might not be done then either, depending on how the state receives our, our revisions. But that said, so if, if there are rezones that are packaged up with this, then we will also prepare an environmental document at a programmatic level. And so that will be similar to how we addressed impacts for our general plan adoption. We'll look at the build-out that's allowed in our general plan on the sites that we're talking, we talked about on July 20, and that we're talking about tonight. Anything that's included in the revised housing element will address by site and a programmatic level what could be allowed now on the site, all but in one case are developed land uses, mostly commercial-type land uses. And then what that build-out would look like with residential. So that will be addressed in, at a programmatic level, and I'll, and I'll flag that all the projects, any project moving forward, will have to have some kind of specific analysis that's included. So very site-specific, when the, when the project is, is before us. So that, those are kind of two distinct things, a programmatic document and then a site-specific document. And I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Yes.
Mayor Protemp, Richards?
Thank you. Well, I want to thank you for your opening comments, Mayor Perotti, and I have some additional ones of my own that I'd like to add, I think, just to kind of frame tonight's discussion. I also want to reiterate the comment that made by my colleague, the council member Reyes Martin, thanking the public and the great deal of input that we've received on this. I think I agree that our, our process does work better when we hear from more people. I want to, first of all, acknowledge that, you know, we were hoping to avoid a situation where we had to rezon. And, and as many of you know, the city has been working on this for over a year now. We first submitted our, our first draft of the housing element to the state over a year ago. And, and our, and that draft and other communications that we've had with the state since then did not include underutilized and non-vacant sites. So the goal of meeting the state's requirements, so we were hoping to meet the state's requirements without unduly impacting any specific neighborhoods or doing what we could to avoid this idea of upzoning or zoning, rezoning. And as we've heard, unfortunately, the state is not buying it. For too long, too many cities have included sites like these in their housing elements and have not gotten results. Too often, the non-vacant sites, like the one we've looked at, have not resulted in the actual construction of housing that was promised or at least hoped for. And it's been our sincerely held belief that these non-vacant and underutilized parcels that we've had on our list really would offer the opportunity to build housing, and that it would be far superior to develop those sites rather than look to vacant parcels. But, as we know, despite our best efforts, we're now looking here at the rezoning of these vacant parcels in order to satisfy the state's requirements and to get our plan certified. So we've heard about the housing affordability crisis, and the state has passed many laws to address that, and we've also known that these laws have reduced or eliminated, in some cases, our ability to say no to growth and development. We simply don't have that option of saying no. So what we hope to accomplish through this exercise is to do what we can to plan responsibly and to be thoughtful about how we get more housing in a way that satisfies the state's requirements but minimizes and avoids unwanted impacts to our city or to particular neighborhoods. I think we can all agree here that we want to preserve the character of Guelita. And this means doing what we can to keep our open spaces and to avoid sprawl and, and developing areas along the urban rural interface. We want to keep that, what's left of that country feeling of Guelita. And we want to fight vigorously against the sprawl and especially along those outlying areas. To me, it makes sense to keep a mix of open rural space with some relatively dense suburban areas in order to avoid that sprawl to the extent possible. I also think that it's important, as we sit here tonight, the planning commission and the city council, that we discuss what some of our considerations are in making these decisions. I think it's important to be transparent and so that you know what we're thinking about as we're discussing these and making these decisions. And I'll share what some of mine are, you know, in terms of, you know, the, where, where it's located, and is it within a distance to a retail or other services? Is it within walking distance? Is there a store or a market in the nearby area? Can our children walk or bike to school safely from there? Are there nearby parks to walk to or bike to? Or, and when I say, you know, alternative forms of transportation, including however people get around, wheelchair, scooter, however we try to get there? Is it accessible to public transportation? Is it convenient to get to it from an MTD bus? We need to consider the impacts of parking and what it would mean for the immediate vicinity and the neighborhood. And in order to reduce the impacts of parking and traffic, we need to take into consideration how people will get around and make sure that they can do as much of their getting around as possible without a car. We may not be able to expect that people will leave their cars at home, but we should make it as easy as possible for them to do so. Will it provide a good mix of affordable units, especially for the low and, and very low-income categories? Is it compatible with the neighborhood and the, and surrounding areas? And there are other important considerations that we will discuss during the planning process, and this is something that we've discussed here also at the last meeting. Today, we aren't reviewing the particulars of any specific projects, and so we're talking about zoning. But when those projects are put forward and we have an actual project to look at, then we can look at the height, the architecture, the extent to which it preserves or enhances our creeks or environmentally sensitive areas, and protects our view sheds. Those are all things that will be fully vetted during the planning process. I want to say that there are no perfect solutions in which we are able to provide all the needed and affordable housing without having any impact all the needed and affordable housing without having any impacts on our community. So our goal here is to minimize those impacts and plan in a way that spreads out the impacts without unduly impacting certain areas. How can we ensure the greatest public good while minimizing the negative impacts on certain areas? And I want to make it clear that the city is not happy with our loss of control in making these decisions. We've opposed many of the bills that have taken our control away, and while many of us may want to push back harder on the state, I'd say we have to pick and choose our battles. We have, after all, sued UCSB for their impacts to the city and our housing, and I'm happy to see that UCSB has just put out an RFQ to pursue building another 3,500 units. I'd like to think that our lawsuit had something to do with that. I hope this is a sign that the university is finally getting serious about providing housing to accommodate its rapid growth. So we are willing to push back when we feel we have a chance of a fair fight, and if we feel it would be a worthwhile investment of public funds for a potentially costly and drawn-out litigation. Finally, I want to just emphasize how important it is that we get our housing plan certified by the state. We submitted our first draft, as I mentioned, to the state over a year ago, and we've been working with them ever since to get it certified. But without getting that final stamp of approval, that certification, we are open to the builder's remedy, which would mean that we have less or no control in our discretion. I believe it's in our best interest to get our housing element certified by the state as soon as possible to further reduce the risks of unwanted development or development in less-than-ideal locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carrillo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a lot to add to all of that, and I know there's a lot of people that are anxious to hear about what's coming and also have a chance to voice their approval or concerns, depending upon the issue. I guess the only thing I'll add is that what we're trying to accomplish at the end of the day is both incredibly simple and wickedly complex. At its basis level, what we're really saying and asking ourselves is, where are there places that it makes sense for housing, that there currently isn't any housing, and how much housing is appropriate for those places? That's the easy part. Should there be more housing? If so, how much? The complex part is getting to the how much. And that's where you really have to take into account a lot of the planning principles and concerns and comments that were addressed by earlier speakers, which I, in the interest of time, I won't repeat. But at a fundamental level, our, our community works best when we have a diversity of choices for a diversity of folks, a diversity of housing options to maintain a diverse community. People who have means have opportunities for housing that you can afford with means. People that don't have a lot of means but make this community work and do the dirty jobs or the difficult jobs or their most dangerous jobs also have a place to, to live so that they can be a part of our community, too. And there's environmental benefits when you plan that way, too. So I'll just reserve any other comments I have till later. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not seeing it. Oh, Commissioner Maynard.
Our city council has laid out our scenario and our challenge so well, so I'll stay focused on questions. Just a couple of quick ones. Could the staff talk about our ability to apply for grants right now? So currently, we've submitted our housing element. It wasn't certified. So I believe this current year, we are currently not eligible for most housing grants. Is that correct?
Commissioner Maynard, I think we'll still apply for grants. In our resolution adopting our housing element, we made the findings that we were compliant with state law. So until we're told we don't get the grants, we'll still keep applying for them.
But in the future, if we don't get a fully certified approved housing element, that could affect our ability in the future to go for grants?
Yes.
There was comment in the public comment about a three-year window versus a one-year window. Can you just clarify that?
I haven't introduced the team yet, but we do have our consultant, and she's remote, Veronica Tam, and so I think she is probably best to answer that question.
Thank you.
Great. Actually, the, the resident who brought up the site inventory guidebook was correct in terms of the three-year. Originally, we do, most jurisdictions would have three years to do the rezoning. However, the guidebook was prepared in 2020, but in September 2021, the state passed a new state law, AB 1398, which says that if you are unable to achieve housing element certification by the state within 120 days from the statutory deadline, which means within 120 days of February 15, 2023, then you only get one year to rezone. Unless you're able to achieve certification within that 120-day timeframe, then you would get three years. But obviously, we're at the point where we're outside of the 120-year window, 120-day window, and we don't have a certified housing element yet, so we are subject to a one-year from the statutory deadline to rezone. So that's the reason why in the staff report and also in the presentation, we talked about that you must complete the rezoning by February 15, 2024.
Thank you. As a quick follow-up to city councilmember Reyes Martin's questions, just for absolute clarity tonight, we are doing some straw polls tonight, but because we have a number of steps moving forward, no decisions that we make tonight are final. We still have a few additional hearings, where anything that is discussed tonight could be reevaluated in this public process. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. This is a study session. We're taking straw votes, and we still have some months ahead of us, moving forward to bring a recommended housing element with revisions to the planning commission and then the city council.
Thank you for clarifying and confirming that. I don't know if you can do this in a short way, and I, I know we've got a lot to get through tonight, so I'm nervous to ask this question, but there was some questions in the public comment, just about the site identification process. And I just know staff has worked so, so hard on trying to identify as many sites as possible. Maybe you could give us a couple of quick bullet points on some of the work that you've been doing on site identification, just because I want to make sure that the, the public in the room tonight really understands how hard staff's been working on, on seeking those sites. And that's the end of my questions as well.
Okay, sure. We, there was a slide in the July 20th presentation, and we don't need to go into that slide right now, but we, that ended, and maybe I should just kind of embed that into my introduction of the staff, because I think it kind of follow, it flows better chronologically and, but I'll integrate a response, because it is really important, the site selection process.
I would be absolutely fine with that.
If it's all right with the mayor, I'll start with the presentation.
Fine. I think we have one more question?
No.
Okay, all right. I think we're ready, yes.
Okay. Okay. So, good evening, and welcome to this continued study session on our adopted housing element, 2023, 2031. And we're looking tonight at our sites inventory. And we started on January, or July 20th, with our candidate sites, and tonight we'll be talking about the alternatives. You have the same staff team in front of you and the same consultant, Veronica Tam. She's remote, as you already saw. So I won't do specific introductions, but I did want to recap a couple of things that I thought were important from the presentation on the 20th. And that is just sort of chronologically, we went through a process that was a year and a half or so, and we adopted the planning commission's recommendation, and the city council adopted the housing element in January of this year. And then we transmitted it to the state for their review, which is the requirement. And so since we adopted the housing element, the state gave us a letter. Around that same time, we also had news from the Water District that, for the first time in many years, that they were looking at later this year, possibly lifting the equivalent of a moratorium on new water allocations. And then we had some property owner interest. So these were kind of new variables that we didn't forecast. And the, the comments that we got from the state, there were a lot of them, but the, the real big one, which is what we're talking about tonight, is our sites inventory. And that is, we presented build-out, our build-out capacity to justify how we can meet our regional housing needs allocation. I'm going to call it RENA from, from now on, because it's such a long phrase. So our, when I say we, we are using our existing build-out, it's what is in our land use capacity now. Where are there underutilized sites where you could add more, you could add housing? And examples are like mixed-use projects. We have one that the city is considering right now. Those would be an example where you could include residential in an existing commercial area. And so there were a number of sites, and the, the state commented on some of them. And some of them, the, the equivalent asked us to remove from the sites because they may be odd-shaped plots. These are very technical things that they're commenting on. So we did. Where they were, you know, where it was clear that they were going to reject those sites, we pulled them out. But when we did, it took sites out of our lower-income count. So the RENA is very mathematical and divided up by income category, and based on, you know, their mathematical equation or their, their methods for calculating potential units on a site at different income levels. It's not based on a project's proposal. It's this more generic approach that they can use across jurisdictions and the state the way they look at it. So it's, so anyway, we have the shortfall. That shortfall was identified in the staff report. And what we did on the sites was, we looked at that property owner interest, because that is important evidence to the state. They're looking for property owner interest. They're looking for vacant lands, for example. And where there's property owner interest and vacant lands, those are the easiest for the state to accept. And you have already said the importance of certification and the February 15th date and the significance there. So those were, you know, two really important things, the infill vacant sites, property owner interest. We are also looking at sites close to major arterials. We were looking at redevelopment potential. One of those sites we will talk about tonight, yeah, tonight, the underutilized potential because of interest from the property owner. And I think really important, no Measure G sites. So none of the Measure G sites. That's in our land use element, and that's LU 7.5, and that was a voter initiative to protect our agriculture lands over a certain size. So we, we are not, HCD will, the state will look at Measure G sites as a, as a constraint and likely just reject it, because by the time we went through the process of addressing the requirements of Measure G, it would, it would be beyond the, the window of our upcoming housing element cycle. So to simplify the process, we did not include Measure G sites. So I wanted to make sure to flag that as criteria. We, we did look at some other sites, but where, where we identified barriers like that, we, they were not included, like the airport safety zone that prohibits housing. That would be another example. You're not going to see sites that would be just immediately disallowed by an airport safety zone. So I think I just kind of covered some of the highlights. I wanted to flag, we're not alone in this. We're not alone in starting with underutilized sites and working our way through the process to get to rezoning, as opposed to, you know, leading with rezoning, we led with what we know we are capable of producing. And when, you know, that was, when there was just, you know, consistent pushback and kind of rejection on the, on the underutilized, it doesn't mean that we're not going to get projects on the, the underutilized sites. We still can, and we still will. They just don't count towards our RENA. So now we're at the, the, kind of the purpose of the study session is to consider the rezones that would address the comments regarding our sites inventory. I'll say it again, we can say it as many times as we need to, it's not a decision tonight, but it is important. And, and we appreciate your time, the public's time. At the July 20th meeting, we went really late, and we appreciate that discussion. And then here again today, important, and we'll look forward to returning to you with a draft. So you will want to note that we have all of the materials from our meetings, including this one, on the project webpage, which is under the Planning and Environmental Review Department, under the Housing Element Project page. So you can go there, kind of one-stop to get all of the materials and take a look at them. We also are posting public comments, so you can see the public comment for this meeting, too, on that website. And I think we have, as of around 3:30, we have about 115 public comment letters. That includes the public comment letters we received on July 20th. And I think before last, at the last meeting, we asked, you know, how did you notice these meetings? Well, obviously, people heard then and, you know, on July 20th and tonight. But the email blasts that went out were to about 10,000 recipients, so we are, you know, doing our best to reach out to people. So I think we'll just go right into a slide that recaps where we left off from July 20th. And if, Veronica, if you could put, I think it's slide 21 or 22? 22. And that will just show you the decisions that were made, or the straw votes that you gave us on July 20th, so you can see how the, in particular, the lower-income count adds up. And while Veronica is loading up the slide, oh, I can recap. When you add up the lower-income unit potential on the sites, and again, it's not, projects are not proposed by a developer. This is the math for the state. It's the way they like to see it packaged up. And yes, there's a lot of counts in the lower-income category. For example, you can see the lower-income category adds up to 838 unit potential on those sites. That's the way the math can be presented to the state so that we can account for RENA. And in the staff report, you'll see a shortfall that was identified. And again, we, when we addressed the state's comments, we had to move lower-income units because of their comments on our underutilized sites out or over to moderate and above moderate. That's creating the shortfall. So 838 units, if you're just, you know, a RENA bean counter, were exceeding the shortfall that we identified of 637 units. But we still have more sites that we wanted to share with you, the alternative sites. And not all of them have property owner interest. Some were included for other reasons that I listed, like close to major arterials, infill or vacant sites, for other reasons. And Andy Newkirk will go over each one of those slides. So if we can proceed, we'll just go right into, the first one is 6470 Hollister, I think. Do you want to switch it over, Veronica? And I don't think, we don't have any recusals that are needed for this site. It's the, the next three sites that we, we have one recusal. But this site, we're good. So I'll just turn it over to Andy, and he'll, as he did last time, describe the, the site and the unit potential.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, and commissioners. So the first site up is 6470 Hollister. If we didn't have this wall in front of us, you could look right across the street, maybe see part of it. It is down by the corner there on Hollister Avenue. It's vacant, and it is currently zoned CG, general commercial, so it, it's not in our adopted inventory at all right now. So if we, if we move forward to, say, rezone it to high-density residential, we'd be able to count 17 units on that site. Kind of a major pro of this site is it's vacant. However, we, we don't have property interest documented for the site, so that's why it's listed as an alternative, is that it doesn't have that compelling piece to it. Not as critical for vacant sites as with underutilized, but still something we, we were seeking, so we haven't had that. And it is a little, so it has, you know, bus access, but it is a little bit detached from other residential or kind of daily commercial uses. So in some ways, it's a good site, but it, you know, it's a little bit more on the margins. And so it was not listed as one of the candidate sites.
And I, as we did the last time, I will pause on the slide, and that way we have an opportunity for your questions and comments, and then public comment, and then your direction.
Thank you. Commissioner Fullerton.
Yeah, a quick question. You said we don't have any owner interest, but does the owner have any say in the rezoning? Like if we do this, or have, they haven't, have they been noticed about this at all? Do they not care if it's rezoned? I'm just curious what the process is.
Commissioner Fullerton, I mean, we'd certainly notice them. We've, we, we don't have direct, I mean, they have like a mailing We've, we, we don't have direct, I mean, they have like a mailing address, but we don't have like a direct like phone number for them. There, the site was posted for commercial leasing. So we reached out to that number and didn't hear back, but we would certainly follow up. But we technically do not need property owner approval for rezone, although certainly like that's something we've been seeking, again, to make them more, those sites more persuasive.
Okay, thank you.
I see Councilmember Kasdan, your hand's up.
Yeah. In large part, I just wanted to test out if this would work. But, but I did have a question. How long is this? Two questions, really. How long has this been vacant? And was it a water issue previously? And now with the availability of water, it's potentially usable?
Councilmember Kasdan, it's been vacant for a while. I don't remember it ever having developed. It's been fenced off for quite a while. So I'm, and I believe there was a use on it prior. But, so I don't know if the water issue, if water is the issue or if there is some other things holding up redevelopment of the site.
Okay. Because it seems like such a prominent location, it's surprising. But anyway, okay, thank you.
And you are working fine.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Carriaco.
Madam Mayor, do you not see me? I'm pressing the button that says in the queue. Does that show up?
It says Jennifer Fullerton and Jason Chapman.
Oh, I think our buttons are messed up.
I don't think they're working.
Or maybe I'm sitting in the wrong place.
I think the buttons don't work because there's so many of us up here. So I think we have to wave.
There's too many.
Okay. Government in action. That's okay. Sorry, sorry. So is there a way, I think I know the answer to this question. Is there a way for this property to be rezoned for something that would allow for a diversity of uses? Because this is an area we've essentially, over the last decade or two, built kind of like almost a...
Test, test. Yeah, we've lost them all.
I was saying something about something.
Well, we, do we have, Stuart, is he on? I don't see him anymore.
We've got to wait. Just one second.
There he is. Okay. All right, we're set.
Okay. So what I think I was trying to say is, I'm interested in trying to make sure we both solve the housing challenges and as much as possible, place sites that are, you know, infill and everything. But I'm also concerned about the fact that this is a neighborhood that doesn't have a lot in the way of, you know, groceries and markets and, and food choices and things of that nature. So I'm just wondering if there's a way that we could kind of have both. I mean, could we do something mixed-use that would allow us to not just actually plan for and build some housing, but actually get some credit for, for it with the state? Or do we have to kind of either just go for residential or not?
That's a good question and a good observation of the location of the parcel. There are other land use categories that allow for residential uses. Community commercial is one of them. And you can't, the issue with the community commercial is you wouldn't be able to count it for the lower income. But it would, it could balance out the two of commercial and residential.
Okay. But then ultimately, at the end of the day, regardless of whether or not we counted it, we're able to count it or not, if we actually build it and we have an inclusionary ordinance, then we end up actually scoring some bonus units, I suppose.
Practically speaking, you, you nailed it. It would get us, inclusionary, get us affordable units and we would have housing where we don't right now.
I'll quit while I'm ahead. Thank you.
Commissioner Fullerton.
Yeah, a question for staff. Just to clarify, if it is included in the RENA, that means we have to rezonate? And then if nothing happens the next time, then it could be built on by the builder's remedy? Is that correct?
I think it's oversimplifying it to some degree. If there, if you, we get the straw votes to rezonate this parcel, for example, and we count it at whatever income category that is allowed. And then we proceed with adoption and the rezoning action, now the, the underlying land use will be not what it is today. It will be different and it will have housing potential. And the timeline for that, we're hoping, is that we can complete the, the housing element adoption and the rezones and get feedback from the state before the February 15th date. So that's the plan and I think my colleagues have something to add.
Commissioner Fullerton, I think one of the things you're referring to is, you know, what happens in eight years, right? Or 16 years? So for vacant sites, they need to be in two consecutive cycles for that to kick in. And it's also for sites that you count towards lower income. So if we, like if you're talking about community commercial, for instance, we wouldn't count it towards lower income, so that provision wouldn't even apply in the future. If it was RH, then that would, provision would apply after, after it's used in two cycles.
Okay. So just one follow-up. So if some of these sites, if we've already hit our pad, there's no reason we can't change the zoning on these separately as a part of a different process, right? There's nothing to say that it has to go on the RENA right now?
Commissioner Fullerton, that's right. I mean, typically, I would say like city-initiated parcel-specific zoning changes are not, not common, but theoretically, that could happen in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smith, and then I'm going to go to Councilmember Kasdan.
A general question. So for example, here, the zoning currently is, is general commercial. Is it correct that in terms of the sites we previously reviewed and then generally today, that none of the sites have current zoning for open space? Is that correct?
Commissioner, Chair Smith, that's right. Yeah, we have two open space designations, open space active rack and open space passive rack. And so none of the sites include any part of the parcel that is within either of those two designations.
Okay. So, so really, the, sort of the challenge before us is there's a certain type of uses that are allowed, you know, depending on the zoning. It's sort of a question for us to consider, you know, whether it's housing or, or other, other zoning. But, but that property owner could, you know, assuming, you know, they could put a proposal forward, you know, depending on whatever that zoning is.
That's correct. Yeah, all of these parcels have some type of development consistent with their existing zoning. And so general commercial, it's kind of our heavier commercial use. It allows more like auto body type commercial uses, but a lot, it really is a pretty broad category of allowable commercial uses.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Kasdan.
Hi. I'm, you know, as a general sort of concept, I'm comfortable with the idea of that area being used for housing. But I wouldn't want to go forward until we actually had some communication with the property owner that they were inclined that way. So it could be that, you know, any vote that we have now is essentially conditional upon being able to contact the property owner. But it just feels, unless there were real desperation on our part and a ticking clock and so forth, I wouldn't be comfortable zoning it without the owners even knowing that this was going on.
Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Thank you. First, a question for staff. If we were to rezone this, would that prevent the property owner from developing something that's not housing?
Councilmember Reyes Martin, yeah, if we're going like RH, high-density residential, it's a pretty limited type of uses. There's some maybe public quasi-public, but your kind of street commercial uses wouldn't be allowed except for like home occupations.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have, or maybe this is more of a comment. I appreciate that this is an exercise that we need to go through to reach the number that we believe will get us certification. And we've talked about the importance of certification. And I also appreciate that we're going through these one at a time. I think the challenge with going through them one at a time, though, is that there's a little bit of prejudice to who goes in what order. You know, if this one, for example, was the first one that we have talked about, you know, I might, we were kind of already in the mode of, we've got to get to that number. And now that we saw that, based on the conversation on Thursday, we have numbers plus a padding, which I recognize we need. All that to say, I hope that at some point tonight in this process, we take a step back to look at everything that we've talked about. Because it is difficult, you know, to, to think about each one in isolation of one another. So I'm getting head nuts, so I'm glad that we will do that.
Mayor and Councilmember Reyes Martin, I just want to let you know that we are keeping a running tally of any changes so we can put up that slide or an interactive spreadsheet at any time to show you where we are and that will facilitate the discussion.
So I have a question on the surplus or buffer, whatever you want to call it. Are we looking at a certain percentage? And is our percentage like 15%? I know, I think it was the Independent or News Hawk made a, said something about 20% and 15%. So we're actually shooting for what? So in the staff report, we try to keep it simple, but it's, it's complicated, you know, behind the back door. But the, the shortfall that was created, that was identified in the staff report was when we addressed HCD's comment and moved some underutilized sites from the lower income category over to above moderate or moderate, or we took them off the inventory altogether. And so we're, that way, that's how we presented that 637-unit number. And that 637-unit shortfall is a little squishy, you know, plus or minus a little bit. And it includes 15% on top of the regional housing needs allocation requirement for lower income. To give us a little bit of a cushion, as noted on July 20th, we don't typically generate 100% affordable units on each of our vacant sites. And HCD lets us count it that way, though, for, for the purpose of RENA. And that's why we need the cushion. Having a little extra cushion is not a bad thing because we'll have to do that math accounting along the way as projects come online. And so that math account, that, that cushion or, or buffer, whatever you want to call it, that we added into the shortfall that's listed in the staff report will, you know, help us so that we don't have to face at some point in the eight-year cycle, if it comes up, rezoning additional sites. So that's why we, we included the alternatives for, you know, a number of reasons. And one of them is to give you choices. Another one is to kind of shore up that, that 15% buffer that we added on to the lower income regional housing need allocation. And then some might just be, you know, locational. There's lots of reasons you might, but I probably over answered the question.
No, thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Chapman?
Thank you. So is it also possible that the state may disagree on like a site-by-site basis with some of our designations and say that this doesn't count? And so part of the motivation would be to try to hedge against that? Is that, is that correct?
Yes. If that, we're, this is all, I mean, vacant sites, infill along major arterials, where services are, I think I already said, property owner interest. Those sites are more likely to have the support of the state. Like, we're pretty sure that those sites will have support from the state. But really, I guess anything can go. Like if it's a vacant infill site that is small or, you know, has some weird shape to it where it might be hard for design, you know, those could get pulled, like some of our underutilized sites that they commented on. But we, but we think that the sites that you have on this list will be accepted by the state. But again, you, it is a little bit of a, you know, there's a little bit of a risk.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carriaco.
Thank you, Madam. Just a follow-up question. So as well as you, you really, I think articulated well, the disparity between, we can say it's 100% affordable, the state realizes perhaps it's not going to be that way, but they let us count it for purposes of the submission. The, but isn't there also the challenge of sort of like, if you break it, you buy it? So if we say that site will yield 17 lower income units, we're ultimately accountable for getting to the total number in the adopted approved housing element of what the number of lower income units is, correct? So if they don't come from here, we have to find them somewhere else. Is that correct?
We don't have to build the sites. The state doesn't make us build the sites. They just have us plan for the sites. So if one site comes up for development and it doesn't produce the sites that are identified and listed in the regional housing needs allocation, then we have that, that buffer cushion. And then we would shift that obligation over to one of those sites. So that's the...
So, so we're ultimately accountable for the total unit count for lower and the others, whether it comes from the site or somewhere else. But the more sites we put in that are at a higher risk of not yielding, the more risk there is. Isn't that correct? That we might not hit, hit the goal? In other words, if we overly rely on sites where there isn't property owner interest and they don't become interested, it gets tougher to get to the number. Does that make sense?
Mayor and Councilmember Carriaco, I think that's only true if we dip below RENA number for that income category. And we talked a little bit about this last week, the SB 166 rule, that, that if we don't have adequate capacity, if we don't realize the capacity on site, then we have a six-month period within which to find that capacity elsewhere in the city. So all this is to say that the, having a substantial buffer is a good idea. It's helpful to us.
I think that's really helpful for me. I'm struggling because this is a site that's in my district. I've supported all the other sites that are in my council district and I want to help as much as I can because I realize there are people who are concerned. But I'm still kind of struggling with some of these, these facts. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Maynard.
So our inclusionary housing requires that 20% of the units at a site would be affordable in the low and very low income category, or actually, you see, even less, because it's 20% affordable and less in the low and very low income. Is that correct?
Vice Chair Maynard, it's, it's split. It's 10% lower, so low, very low, extremely low. And then there's moderate and above moderate, 120 to 200. So it's, it's kind of stratified really under five different categories.
So we're planning on 100% of these RH sites being affordable, but likely, what we've seen in the past is most developers come in at the inclusionary housing elements. So they're likely to come in at 10%, not 100%. So about 90% off the mark on some of these. So I just, that's more of a comment, but I do want to like highlight the difference between counting 100% and what we know of our inclusionary housing is significantly less. My other follow-up question then is there's, if we don't build the low-income units in the eight-year period, I think Mr. Newkirk, you had talked about some other provisions that would kick in if we weren't actually building. Because I want to go back to that comment of, is this a planning exercise or a building exercise? And there are some requirements, there are some changes to law that start to occur if we don't end up building the units. Isn't that correct?
Yeah. Vice Chair Maynard, yeah, I think we're on our third bill reference of the night so far. So there's SB 35, which is kind of the, the consequences for not building it. And that's been on the books for a little while now, part of our fifth cycle. And as we report annually, you see our general planning reports in, you know, February, March, we send that to the state and they will look to see, are we on track? You know, looking out, projecting for the eight years, are we on track to meet RENA, both the total and the separate income categories? And depending on if we're on track or not... And depending on if we're on track or not, there are consequences for basically streamlined ministerial approval for housing projects, depending on how much lower income unit they're, what percentage of lower income units they're proposing. So right now, we're in the fifth cycle, where we've met our overall RENA, but we have not met our lower incomes. So right now, we're in kind of this middle group, where a project has to propose 50% lower income. If you fall short of your overall RENA, then you get down to streamlined processing if 10% is lower income. So that's something that, you know, will have a consequence on how we're seeing development throughout the planning period.
And I'm just going to step it way back, and looking at the RENA, the state lets us count it this way. We know that we're not going to get, or we, no, we don't know, was, we have seen 100% affordable, lower income unit projects. So that is possible. But the state looks at our inclusionary as a constraint that we have to explain. So we're, you know, there's lots of inputs here. It's a challenge. But the state lets us count it this way. That's why we have, we need the surplus, so that we have a buffer. So there's lots of different things we're doing here. And if we could just look at the sites for, you know, the state allowing us to count it at lower, getting a cushion, we know, we know that in many cases, we won't get 100% affordable. We can work towards that. We have programs in place to do exactly that. That might not work. Our inclusionary isn't, of course, going to drive all of that. We're lucky, we're in a town with so many nonprofits. And hopefully, we'll keep getting access to grants so that we can work with our property owners and developers to get more affordable units on the site. But that's why we need to, you know, increase our capacity where we can for housing potential and remember that we'll have other affordable units that we're not counting on, in the math for the RENA, because the state won't let us. But we know we'll have affordable units on those sites. So we have the math game for RENA in our housing element, and then we have the reality. And we're trying to look out for all of those things, to get extra, excess capacity so that it all works out. And in the end, if everything was to build out, which is also very unlikely, but that, we are trying to keep that vision in place, so that we're not put in a position somewhere in this next eight-year cycle where we would have to look at rezoning again.
Any other questions before we go to public comment? I'll take public comment at this time.
I do not have any speaker slips for this particular property, but if any members of the public wish to comment on Zoom, please raise your hand. Now, Colin Yu. And I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay. Back to commissioners and council. Mayor Protem Richards.
Thank you. Yeah, I think for this property, I'm a little hesitant to include it on our list for a couple reasons. And the one is the lack of owner interest. And then the other one, as was also mentioned, is just the lack of services, the lack of retail shopping in that area, which I think is twofold, because not only is there a lack of it for any potential housing that's put on this site, but then it also reduces, it changes the zoning from a potential development of retail or other services out of the equation. And as we know, that there are a lot of developments to the north, villages at Los Carneros, the Heritage Ridge, and Willow Springs, and all of that, all of those areas need more. I think it's kind of a desert in terms of services in that area. So, and this would be potential for filling that need. So for those reasons, I'm hesitant to add it.
Commissioner Maynard.
I was really excited about City Councilmember Karyaco's note around alternative commercial designations. It doesn't help us with getting our low-income numbers tonight, but I think a switch from CG to CC commercial, the community commercial would allow for more flexibility of the site, to allow for potential residential later down the line. It'd be a softer rezone change, so it'd have less financial impacts for the owner who's not present tonight, but would give us some potential for multi-unit development. So I would be open to the idea of a switch from CG to CC, but have the same caution as Mayor Protem in terms of going all the way to RH on this tonight.
Councilmember Karyaco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can support that. And, you know, if the owner gets interested and, you know, reads, you know, maybe they see, you know, some news coverage or something, and they decide, oh, no, no, I want high density, then I'm happy to revisit it, because I do think it's a really good site. I also think there's a screaming need for there to be something walkable and bikeable in this area that provides other options. And I just also want to acknowledge that Planning Commissioner Chapman made a lot of these same arguments at our last meeting. I am, to a certain extent, drafting off of him.
Councilmember Kasdan.
Yeah, I think that's fine, as long as we can, we should continue to reach out to the property owner. And be, you know, we, whatever we do today, whichever, whether it's CG or whether it's residential, and I'm fine with either of those, that we just making an ongoing effort to reach out and, you know, see, get their reaction to it. But I'm fine with either way.
And I'll say, and we'll go to the rest of the planning commissioner as well, but, you know, I have to say, I've always thought that that area needs something where people just need to, a market or something where they can run in and not have to go all the way over to Stork and Glen Annie where it's so congested. So I would agree with, if we could do CC, and definitely get the owner engaged and see what he'd like, or she, who owns it. Okay, so Commissioner Miller.
Yes, I think it should stay CC for now, and just see what happens later, if, after we talk to the property owner.
Mr. Maynard.
Sorry, just a clarification. It's currently CG. There's a proposal to switch it to CC.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. I say CG, keep it at CG, as opposed to CC, for now, until we talk to the property owner.
Please.
So, yeah, I would like to second the need for sort of walkable services. This is my neighborhood. It's a new neighborhood, and actually, with Heritage Ridge being built eventually, there'll be even more people who, yeah, you could save a lot of car trips with some, sort of treating this as a neighborhood and thinking about what it's missing. I also wanted to sort of, kind of, talk about the proposal for flexibility. I think it's possible, I think maybe staff could clarify this, but it could be possible to allow limited commercial in something like an RH district, in such a way that would not limit the affordable housing capacity. If it was possible to do something like that in the future, then I would feel more comfortable with RH here.
Mayor and Commissioner Chapman, that is an interesting idea, but that's something that would require further study and that we'd have to address, I think, outside of this process. As we talked about last week, the concern would be that if we allow commercial on a site, that would limit the residential development potential and therefore prevent counting of full capacity. So I think that's something for further consideration down the road, understanding the basic insight that walkable services are helpful and necessary to avoid car trips and allow for services nearby.
Thank you.
So I think we need to do, do we need to do a straw vote on putting it into the housing element? I'm kind of hearing a lot, I mean, but I think we should do that first, but we're not voting on CC tonight. That would be separate.
It's however you want to give us direction, a straw vote, just as long as you're clear as to the straw vote being high-density residential, or whether it's community commercial.
Okay. Okay, so we'll start with the commissioners. Commissioner Fullerton.
I, I think without, I guess I could support changing it to CC. That would be my vote.
Commissioner Chapman?
I think I could support the staff's recommendation for the RH.
To put it in the housing element? Is that what you're?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
For now, I'm sort of mindful of the opportunity to pull back and take a global view at the finish, but I think for now, I'm inclined for status quo and not moving into high-density residential.
Commissioner Maynard.
I would lean towards community commercial.
Commissioner Miller?
Okay, well, then if that's the situation, I would also lean towards community commercial.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
I would support community commercial or the RH designation. I agree with kind of needing to take a step back once we're through, going through all the sites, but I do agree with Councilmember Kasdan that we should continue to really try to reach this property owner.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Well, without having any contact or information from the property owner, I would say not to change it to RH, and I would support the CC change.
And I would agree with that as well. And with, please make contact with the property owner and see what they think. Councilmember Karyaco.
I'll do CC.
So I think we have it, right?
And Councilmember Kasdan.
Oh, my gosh. Councilmember Kasdan.
Thank you.
So sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm fine, like I said, that CC is good. I can see the value in that. I can see RH. I think it's a good location for either thing. But really, that we should try and reach out to the property owner to, before we make any formal action. Are we able to actually just do an overlay, or something like that if necessary? But in any case, CC is fine, too. That's almost like an overlay.
Okay.
Mayor and council and commissioners, I just wanted to clarify one thing regarding the staff recommendation. The staff recommendation was with respect to the candidate sites. And on these alternative sites, we're not necessarily recommending an action. They were just available for your consideration. So as Ms. Wells laid out at the beginning of her presentation, we do have adequate capacity to meet our RENA now. And at this point, it's just a question of whether, for buffer purposes, or because you wish to reconsider one of the candidate sites, you want to add in a site now. But, so staff is agnostic, really, on whether you include or not include these sites or rezone them to something different.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, I think we can move on to the next one.
Yeah, so let's move on to the Via Haro site, and I think we have.
Recusal.
Recusal and.
Have anybody that needs to recuse themselves? Commissioner Miller?
Yes, I need to recuse myself because I live too close by.
Yes, just for the record, Commissioner Miller has a potential conflict of interest by proximity of her home to this site, so she will recuse herself and leave the room. And we'll call her back in when we move on to a site that she is not conflicted on.
Okay.
All right, so while she's stepping out of the room, all right, the slide's set. Go ahead, Andy.
And Mayor, council members, and commissioners, this is the, what we call the Via Haro site. It has no address currently. And it's the labeled site on the little inset map there, so it's kind of at the northwest corner of the roundabout there, Via Haro. It is a vacant site. You may remember, not too long ago, there was a general plan amendment initiation on the site to change the land use designation to OI, which is office and institutional, and the intent there was a future application for battery storage. So we have listed this site. We do not have expressed property owner interest. It's owned by a Houston-based energy company, so kind of operating under the assumption that we don't, with them as the property owner, that they probably wouldn't be interested in building housing. But nevertheless, it is a vacant site, so it does have that positive. And then, just talking about this neighborhood a little bit, we have a CG designation, kind of a, kind of across the roundabout there. That's an assisted living, kind of senior facility. And then there's newer residential in this kind of western portion of Galita. There's a couple of different projects that have been approved since cityhood. So we've seen a little bit of a change in that part of town to more residential. And there's certainly, you know, certain education, open space amenities in that part of town. So while we don't have property owner expressed interest here, we have a vacant site that, you know, has some residential around it, and we felt it was appropriate to flag this site for consideration. And it's, even though it's vacant, it's not in our inventory now because it's zoned general commercial. And so at 2.1 acres, if we included it as RH, we could count 63 lower income units.
Thank you. Questions? Mayor Protem Richards?
Thank you. Yeah, I remember that one or more of these properties that are outlined here, we had initiated a general plan amendment. Can you refresh my memory and let us know where we are in those processes?
Yeah, so Mayor Protem Richards, it is this site, and so it was from CG to OI. They did the initiation. The initiation was approved. And again, that's kind of the, you know, the first step, and it's really pre-project application. So they have not submitted an actual application for that project yet. It may come in tomorrow, it may, we may never see it. But currently, that's the status of it. There's no pending application at this time, but there is that first kind of go-ahead with the initiation on this site.
And there's, the general plan initiation has a time limit on it, right? That they need to act within a certain time, or else the initiation goes away? Do we know where we are in that?
Mayor Protem Richards, I don't think we have the specific timeline available, but there is a, there is a time limit that applies to those initiations. They don't, they don't stay in perpetuity. They don't run with the land, like an entitlement.
Right. And are we, will we also be discussing those other two parcels here tonight? The northeast corner parcel, and then the one along Hollister? Is that up for discussion as well, or is only one tonight, that one?
Yeah, we're discussing these all separately because of different potential conflicts. So, yeah, we are focusing solely, for the time being, on the vacant Via Haro site.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Maynard.
I have a very quick question. What is the access to this site? It seems like the middle of the block there.
So Vice Chair Maynard, kind of covered up by one of those turquoise lines is Via Haro. So there's a north-south running road, Via Haro, that enters onto Hollister. And there's kind of a roundabout at the end of that little road segment. You can kind of see in the, in the Google Street View capture we have, you can kind of see roundabout-looking pavement there, looking onto the site. So that's at the edge of that roundabout.
Okay, so the lower right is the assisted facility, the independent living facility?
That's correct, yeah. And then, like, the school, Old School, will be just to the east of that.
By the way, I just wanted to note, I checked the zoning code, and Ms. Wells was able to direct me where to look. And the time period within which a general plan amendment initiation expires is two years. And I don't know, I think we're pretty close to that mark, if we haven't already passed it for this site. We haven't heard anything more from that particular battery storage applicant, so it likely will not proceed.
Any more questions? Commissioner Smith?
And just, I guess, more of a comment, that the parcel that's labeled PQ, that's the Gas Peker plant site, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kasdan.
Yeah, is this the one of the battery storages that is also near the hideaway?
Councilmember Kasdan, yeah, the initiation, the. Councilmember Kazin, yeah, the initiation, the intent was to change the designation to a land use that would allow battery storage.
Well, no, what I'm referring to is the property, the residential property, the condos, the hideaway. So in other words, if that's the right one that I'm referring to, we have an unusual situation where in most of our other properties, the challenge is often that people are complaining they don't want residential housing and don't convert the land to residential housing. In the case of this battery storage, we've had the opposite, where we've had a lot of speakers in the past when this was initially being proposed saying, "This is more appropriate for residential housing. Please don't put in a battery storage and put in residential..."
Test, test.
Yep.
Mr. Imhoff's point that we're coming up to the close of that two-year period is interesting. But I don't think we can, it would be appropriate that if it's the same concern on the, as the other site that we just had.
Councilmember Kazin, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
We saw you talking. It sounded like, it looked like you had a lot to say, but we missed it all.
All of it? Okay. I was really just observing. I have two points essentially. Just one is just an observation.
Yes, you're still on. I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. One, just an observation that in the past with the...
Excuse me, let's stop one minute. We're missing a couple of people.
Oh, that's why.
My fault. We're missing Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Oh, she's recused. Yeah, right.
No. Okay. I think we're good to go.
Well, it's something, it's just that this is unusual compared to our other properties in which the nearby residents have preferred to have housing added near them as opposed to, in this case, the battery storage. So I don't think we can rezone it. It's the same argument. I don't think we can rezone it without the property owner's awareness and participation in some way. I mean, that would feel almost like a taking or something like that, where they're a battery, an energy company, and we rezone it to something else. It just, it seems, that would seem problematic to me. But it is something, though, down the road, given the interest of the residents and that we are, I believe, on the agenda on our, the work plan. There is an effort, I don't know if it's on the immediate list, but to look at what are the preferred or ideal sites for battery storage. So anyway, that's... Thanks for waiting.
Thank you. Any other? I'm not seeing any other. Okay, public comment, please?
I do not have any speaker slips for this site, but if there are any members of the Zoom webinar who wish to speak, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. And I'm not seeing any hands raised.
All right, back to commissioners and council. Councilmember Kariakko?
Well, I would normally think this would be a really good infill opportunity. I mean, I think, again, it's that principle of, you know, the state wants us to show our work. It's not unfortunately enough for it to just be potentially a good site. And so I would be leaning towards not changing the designation at this time. But again, you know, to Councilmember Kazin's point on the prior project, and I think on this one as well, we should definitely make our best efforts to continue to try and contact them and see if we can come to some kind of an understanding. That would be my, that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Mayor Pretim Richards?
I'll just echo those comments exactly. I think it would be a little, I'm not sure how the state would look at that, if they would see that we put it on a list. And if they have any knowledge that the owner had previously tried to put a different kind of non-housing project on there, they might not like that too much.
Anybody else want to? Commissioner Maynard?
Just consistently, the fact that it is an energy company and not in residential, that it's recently applied for a different designation, showing an active intent on not using residential, and then the inconsistency, and then not really being confident that this would be developed, plus the consistency with the last site that we looked at. As a planning commissioner, I always look at consistency as how we deal with different property owners. And the last property owner, we didn't want to make significant changes without them here. This would be a much, a significant change, and they're not present. So I would love to see this be RH, but without more engagement with the property owner, I couldn't support that today.
I'm going to chime in real quickly. I agree that it would be great if we could have housing on this. And it seems like the majority of emails I've received were quite in favor of that. I'm guessing, I don't know this for a fact, but I think the battery storage was an idea that they approached the owner, and we did implement or change a general area. It was an initiation of general plan amendment. And there was a pretty large outcry from the community that they didn't want a battery storage for a lot of different reasons. I think the battery storage company pulled out. So I don't think that, I would hesitate to say this for sure, but I don't think that project's going to happen anymore. But having said that, I still have concerns about doing something without really talking with the owner, but it would be an ideal site. Commissioner Chapman, and then Commissioner Fullerton?
So if we don't include this on the housing element, could we still direct staff to reach out and sort of, I guess, communicate that there's open-mindedness to allowing for residential rezoning here, potentially in the future?
Commissioner Fullerton?
Yes, I agree with all the statements. I did see a lot of public comment supporting housing there, which is great, and it would be a good location. So maybe that'll work out in the future, but I don't think we should include it today.
Well, this site has gone through, I think this is the site that's gone through a lot of concerns from the community. First, it was the CHP office, or somewhere in there, if I have that location right. So I, you know, I think housing would be great in that area. Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Yeah, I'll just add my, probably echoing a lot of the comments. It's really compelling to me when we have, you know, a good number of neighboring residents who are very supportive of housing, that that doesn't always happen. So that's very encouraging and compelling to me. I agree with the comments about perhaps not including it at this time. But to Commissioner Chapman's point, having staff continue that outreach with the property owner so that we can, you know, continue to move along that and see if that could come later.
I think we're all in agreement. So do I still need to do a straw vote? I think we're, no? Or yes?
I think we have the instruction that we need.
Okay. All right.
All right, so we will move on to the next site, which is 7780 Hollister Avenue. And it's frontage, and it's the same recusal. So I think we can continue on.
Commissioner Maynard?
I just wanted to make sure we get our last commissioner back, because I think she doesn't have a conflict on this one.
Does she still have to stay out for this one? Is this still a conflict?
I believe it's still a conflict. We'll get some confirmation.
Okay.
Yes.
I may, I'm not sure if I have a conflict for the front or the back. I have a conflict for one of them.
Okay, we're checking on that. Councilmember Kazin?
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to do the front parcel. So that is not the one that Councilmember Kazin is conflicted, has a conflict on. But for Commissioner Miller, she's conflicted out for the same reasons.
Okay, got it. Okay. We're able to move forward.
Mayor, council members, and commissioners, maybe a little bit of the same story on this site. This is the frontage parcel, and it may go unnoticed until you start actually looking at it, that it's really a highly underutilized site. It's kind of a parking, unused parking lot, big parking lot, 5.7 acres. And it's currently zoned CG, so it's not in our inventory. We did speak to the property owner on this one, and they do not intend to build residential. So we kept it in. We wanted to flag it, but especially on an underutilized site, we have really kind of the opposite of what we're typically searching for, for those rezones. So we wanted to flag it, and now we're looking, we've looked at it, you know, as part of this kind of area of town. But that's kind of the main drawback. It is probably as underutilized as we have in our potential sites. But we don't have the intent of the property owner on this one.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Did the property owner indicate something they are interested in? Or is there a previous application on this site?
So Councilmember Reyes Martin, they're looking at a, there is no pending application. But there is an intent to do a commercial use on the site. I'm not sure how much detail we want to get into on what they're proposing, what they're looking to do. But it was clear that it's a commercial use that like fits within the CG designation.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a comment. Is that, is that, is that the site? I believe there was one of the sites that was, was that some overflow parking for the hotel? Was that that site? Is that in terms of the use? Or we're not sure?
It may have been this, it may be this type, but we're not totally sure. But it, I mean, you can see from the aerial, like even when it's, when there's vehicles in there, it's very, very few. It's, you know, it's never a full, full-use site.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kariakko?
Less a question, more of a comment. My understanding is the Picara is really interested in employee housing and would probably really love the opportunity for a site like that. So it's just a shame that the owner's not interested. That's all.
Councilmember Kazin?
Yeah, I've heard the Picara folks rueing the fact that they didn't buy it when they had a chance for housing. But are we able to, I mean, I don't, are we able to do something like an overlay and leave it as general commercial so that it's still available for the property owner, but sort of offer the additional potential for housing? And, you know, I guess we only partially count it or don't count it as low income for the housing element, but it's at least an option?
If we were to do something like including a site in an overlay, then we would have to, we wouldn't be able to count the units in the lower-income category.
We wouldn't count it lower, but we would count overall in some way. Is that right?
Yeah, it would be in the above-moderate or moderate categories.
Okay, do we have any interest in that? Is that, I know we have more of a availability, but is there any, is it worth it? If we already know they're likely not interested? That's, that's a question. Uh-oh.
Thank you.
No.
No, we're still okay.
Okay.
He worries once we get too quiet, like they're calling it.
No, for Ms. Wells, is that, is there, you know, kind of any benefit for us doing something like that? Or it's just not really worth it if they're not, if we know they're not interested? Not trying to do a, an overlay of some sort?
Councilmember Kazin, I think one of the challenges we would have is, especially on those underutilized, as we've talked about, one of the things we've really sought is that developer interest to show that not only are we going to rezone the site, but that we would expect soon thereafter to actually see the units produce, or to see an application, that there's real interest. So that may be looked at with skepticism if we counted those units really at all, not just lower income, but even in the moderate, above-moderate. Without that showing, it's a, it makes our case a little weaker on, or weaker for that site to be included in our inventory.
All right. So, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have any public speakers?
I do not have any speaker slips, but if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak regarding this property, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. And I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. Okay, back to council and commissioners. Councilmember Kariakko?
I'll just be real brief. I can't support changing the zoning.
You said you can't?
Cannot.
Okay. Anybody else? Let's go through the commissioners first and with this, and then, and then the council. Okay, council member, or Commissioner Fullerton?
Yeah, since the owner has made it clear they are not interested, I can't support adding it.
Okay. Commissioner Chapman?
Yeah, I agree, just at least for the sake of consistency. If, I mean, this is not only non-interest, but disinterest. And so as much as we think this would be a good site, I guess it's sort of outside of the housing element process.
Commissioner Smith?
I agree, I would not recommend changing the zoning at this time. I just also want to comment that we're also, you know, the far western, south, or yeah, southwestern side, you know, it's also sort of still, I guess, a work in progress, you might say. And there are limited, you know, really, you know, there's the 7-Eleven, but even the 7-Eleven is at least temporarily closed at the moment. But there's also just some constraints in the neighborhood. You know, there's new residential, but in terms of other services are more limited on the western side, the far western side. So I just wanted to note that as well.
Okay. Commissioner Maynard?
I cannot support this at the time.
Back to council. Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Yeah, I think similar to the other property, I'll probably say it for the next one as well. It's too bad that the property owner is not interested. I think it's, for me, with these properties, it's not just property owner interest. That is one of the important factors, as we've heard from staff, but that there is neighborhood support for housing here. You know, I really wish we could, we could do that. But I think knowing that the property owner is not interested, at least at this point, it doesn't make sense to include it. But hopefully, they are watching and seeing that there's community support for housing there. So, thank you.
Mayor Pretim Richards?
Yeah, I agree with those comments. I would also compare this to the other property that we looked at, Los Corneros Way and Hollister, and thinking that it would be a good place for a mixed use. And I would, you know, I think that the community commercial would be a good designation there. But I don't want to go down that, go down that way right now without the interest of the property owner. But again, you know, if there were, you know, if they are listening, I think, because as was mentioned, I mean, there is a lack of services in that area. There aren't stores. And if there were some more opportunities for that western end of Galita to have a place to shop, a market, or something that may alleviate some of the traffic that already goes down Hollister to the marketplace, then that would be ideal. But, but, but no, I don't support the designation of RH on this.
And I won't support the designation for all the reasons that have been stated. Councilmember Kariakko?
I'm still a no.
Okay. I think we... I am so sorry, your presence is missed at this meeting. Thank you. Yes, please, go ahead.
I'm just ditto what everyone else has said.
I just have one question for you. Do you have a lot of people in your room listening to this?
Oh, yes, it's a vast crowd of people.
It's a full house, yeah?
Yeah, standing room.
Okay, so I think we have, all of us in agreement, so.
Okay, so we'll move on to the third parcel in that same block, and that's the rear parcel. And I think we, based on the list I have, it's the same recusal. So we'll just keep...
This is the rear, this is the rear parcel. Right. So Councilmember Kazin is, has a potential conflict on this. Councilmember Kazin has a potential conflict under the Political Reform Act on this next site because of the proximity of the site to his home. And he will recuse himself by leaving the meeting for now. Or you can turn... Or you can turn off your camera.
Okay, thank you. I was a little nervous there.
Mayor, councilmembers, and commissioners, so this is the, the third site of this three, and so this is the site behind the senior living, assisted living facility. It's an existing parking lot, and it's labeled on the site there. So this is what we're calling the 7780 Hollister Rear Parcel. Currently Zoned CG, so not in our inventory, could be, account for 54 lower income units with a reason to RH. This property owner, we've been trying to make contact with. We have a contact person, but we have not gotten a clear indication yet from them. We're, we'll still work on that, but we don't, like, they're a local property owner. So, so, you know, it's someone we, we've had voice messages back and forth with, but we have not had a clear indication from them what their intent is. So we're lacking that at that ti, at this time, but it certainly is another highly underutilized site as is purely parking at this point. So we wanted to flag this site for consideration.
So you, I'm understanding you haven't gotten, you spoke with the owner, but you're, it's not clear.
We have, we have not spoken.
Oh, you have not?
To each other. We've spoken to each other's voice message systems at this point.
Okay. And you didn't get any favorable voice messages on this?
No, I mean, indicating that there was a, there was a vision, but we don't have that yet.
Okay. All right, that's too bad. Okay, any questions on this one? No, I'm not seeing any public comment.
I don't have any speaker slips, but if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand and I'll call on you.
I'll come back.
I don't see any hands raised.
Commissioner Chapman?
Okay, I did have a question on this. If we were to go through with the rezone, what would that mean for the existing use on the site?
Councilman Chapman, we'd have to look at the zoning code, whether this is a, well, a standalone parking lot is even in approved use right now. So without doing like an assessment of whether the existing use is conforming or not, it would be really hard to tell. There's a potential to be, to create a, a non-conforming use with a rezone process, but we didn't do, you know, an assessment of that, because again, we didn't analyze whether this use was an allowed use within CG.
Thank you.
I guess, are we all in agreement? Do we, anybody else? Council, Commissioner Fullerton?
Yeah, the same as with the previous. If we don't have any indication from the owner, I don't support it.
I agree with Commissioner.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
I agree. I think it's still, I realize our staff is very busy. I think it's still worthy to try to continue conversations, but, but I would agree to keep the status quo for now.
Yeah, I would agree to status quo.
I would also not support the rezone, especially because we have had contact with the owner, and they have not expressed an interest in switching. And so I don't think we could honestly include it, and it would be an aggressive rezone. So in consistency with last three decisions, I couldn't support this.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Yeah, I think the same comment. I would urge us to continue to reach out to the property owner. It's a promising site for housing. They are perhaps not aware that there has been neighbor support for housing there, if that helps them get closer to their vision, because I think this, this could be a promising site for that, but at this point, I'm not including it.
Mayor PM?
I agree with what's been said.
Okay. All right. Yes, council. Commissioner Chapman?
Would it be possible to give sort of a conditional recommendation in that between the time of preparing the draft and hearing from the property owner, if they did contact you and say, yes, we're actually interested in, in housing, would it be possible to add it to the housing element, or sort of what we say here final as far as that first draft?
I think the feedback that you give us today can direct us to, you know, continue to pursue contacts with the property owner, and then we will release a draft, and then we'll return with the revised draft eventually to the planning commission, and at that time, we can report back on the results of the outreach.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
And I'll just say that I think if there is any owner interest in rezoning that for housing, I would be fully supportive of RH in this area.
That's what I.
I concur.
Okay.
All right, we got that. I think, so if we're ready to move on to the next site, we can bring, yes, both Commissioner Miller and Councilmember Caston back. Winnie, can you confirm that there aren't any conflicts with the parcels to the east of 7190 Hollister Avenue?
Yes, I can confirm there are no conflicts with this site, these two parcels.
Okay, so we'll just wait a minute here for Commissioner Miller to rejoin us. And it looks like Councilmember Caston's here, so just a minute or so.
So Mayor Protem, councilmembers, and planning commissioners, we discussed this, these sites in conjunction with the site just to the west of that, which actually is 7190 Hollister Ave on Thursday, and the decision at that point was to kind of, to revisit these two parcels as part of the alternatives list. So without, without rehashing too much, we have these two vacant parcels, they're split zones, it's pretty hard to see on the screen. The front, like essentially front half, maybe a little less, is Zoned CG, and then the back half is Zoned RM, medium density residential. So both sites are in our adopted housing element inventory because of the vacant back half of the sites. So when you see the units with current zoning, it's 82 lower income, that's what we have. Without a rezone, that's what we would include in the, in that housing element. With a rezone, we'd be up to 205. And I will note, there's been a couple of public comments on this. Just want to make one clarification about the ESHA conversation. Any rezoning land use designation change won't change, won't de facto change the ESHA. Any consideration of the, of the ESHA on the site would be done as part of the project analysis. So this, that's, that's always how we do it. We look, we start with the mapped ESHA. There may be a, the applicant may provide a biological study. We would assess that, probably do a peer review of that analysis, and then, you know, make determinations about that ESHA as the project moves forwards. So nothing changes about the mapped ESHA with a rezone. That would be project specific. So I just wanted to be really clear about that, because I think there was some, some concerns that by rezoning, we were accepting that any changes in the mapped ESHA. That is not the case. So I just wanted to make that point of clarification. And we're happy to answer any questions.
I have a question on the biological study. Would, if we were to move forward with this, would we have our own, with all due respect to, there has been suggested that they've done a study, or we've done a study, but would we do a, a study to, you know, to another set of eyes, I guess?
Yeah, we would at least do like a peer review, an assessment of that work, certainly with an ESHA map change, it's a pretty big, pretty big call. So, you know, it's not simply that the applicant submits a bio study, and we say, okay, we're changing the map. So it would be, it would be assessed as part of the project, correct?
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this, this diagram shows it pretty clearly that there's a split in the zoning on those two parcels, and it looks like the one, the 7190 as well. All three have the CG in front and then residential in the back. Can staff describe, are there any assessments that we could make in terms of what the traffic differences would be for the CG versus the, you know, versus a housing complex? You know, I know one of the concerns in this area is that there is a lot of impact of traffic on, along Hollister, that corridor there, especially at Stork. And, and I think that it's been put out there that they're concerned about, you know, a large housing development creating more traffic. But I'm wondering if that is an accurate assessment of what the difference would be between a housing, a housing development versus the commercial allowance that's already there in the CG? So can, is there any assessment that can be made or, you know, about what the traffic impacts would be?
In short, we aren't prepared, and we didn't do an analysis of what build out, the build out potential at this site is currently, or versus if it was high density residential. And it would really, you know, be subject to the design and the flow, and where the, there's ingress and egress, and then what kind of mitigations were required, and what kind of conditions were applied, and, you know, those kinds of things. So that, that would be done project specific, but I think we have other answers to that additional supporting comments.
Mayor and Mayor Protem, I would just note that there are, of course, a couple of different measures of traffic impact, and for the vehicle miles traveled measure, which is what we apply now for sequel purposes, in general terms, residential is likely to have less of an impact because we're correcting the jobs, housing imbalance. But what Ms. Wells says is exactly right with respect to level of service or congestion measures. Without a site-specific study, we can't really say.
And I would just add to that, CG allows a lot of different types of commercial uses. Some may have low, particularly peak hour is often what we look at, that AM peak hour and the PM peak hour. So with, even within the, the commercial designation, you're going to have a pretty wide range of trip generation assumptions for different types of uses, like, you know, without even saying if it's allowed or not, but like a Starbucks in the morning may have a lot of, you know, trips in and out. I mean, it might not generate the trips, but trips in and out that would impact the roadway, where there may be some other uses that have very, very low trip generation. So like, when a project comes forward, we typically require a traffic study that would look at what's being proposed and really look at in detail those trip generation assumptions and the impacts associated with them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Carriaco, and then Councilmember Caston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is CG one of the zoning designations that can allow for a drive-through as an allowable use if it's ultimately approved?
We're looking that up right now.
So Councilmember Carriaco, we don't list out drive-throughs as a separate type of use in our use tables. We have a separate standard for it, and it requires a major CUP. So it really, regardless of where a drive-through is proposed, if the use is allowed, a drive-through theoretically would be allowed, but it needs that major CUP on top of whatever other approvals.
But generally speaking, you don't have drive-throughs in residential projects, correct?
Correct.
But commercial, you do.
Yeah, I mean, even with home occupations, there's limits on the number of like onsite contacts.
Okay. My next question is about the, the residential medium that's in the back portion of the parcel. Do we have kind of a rough estimate of about how much in terms of acreage that parcel, that portion is? Just a guess is fine. It doesn't have to be exact. A round number would help too.
Yeah, four to four and a half, maybe, somewhere in that range, out of 6.9. It's a little more than half.
Okay. And then, and do we have a sense of, is half of that four acres have mapped ESHA? Is it less than half, more than half? An approximation is fine.
We'll have to pull up the mapping.
While we're looking at the map, I think it's mostly the, the center portion that has the mapped ESHA in the general plan.
Okay. And then while you're looking that up, my understanding is that the housing element is being amended so that if you own property and it's zoned a particular way, for example, for housing, if you, even if you have constraints on part of the project, you are entitled to the maximum or less density for the, the whole parcel in terms of your unit count. Is that correct? So if it's, if it's seven acres, let's say, let's say it's four acres of, of residential, and you only would have, you would have ESHA on two of it, you could have four acres worth of density on the two acres that don't have the constraint. Is that generally correct?
That's correct, and we actually, we've made that change, because we started implementing our adopted housing.
That's right.
As we've been updating it. So we have made that change in our regulations already.
So then potentially, you could find yourself in a situation where if part of the project, part of the property remains commercial in the front, and you have ESHA constraints on the back, you could actually get to high density in terms of the visual impacts of high density by forcing the project to have medium density for the entire parcel just on a smaller portion of the project, right? So you, if, if they're owed the unit count because we're saying the unit count is allowed, and you can't spread it out through all the residential medium dense portion because of constraints like, like ESHA, don't you then have to find a way to concentrate the units in the rest of the parcel?
You, Councilmember Carriaco, you would have a smaller footprint for the unit count, and the smaller the parcel, then the smaller the area that you would have that unit count.
Is that another way of saying the smaller the footprint, the higher the perceived You're putting more stuff into a smaller place.
Right, or smaller units, yeah, or smaller units. So it's, it's going to constrain something.
Okay. I think that's it for me for now.
Councilmember Caston, and then Commissioner Fullerton.
Okay, so starting with that last observation, the, the front portion of it has significant ESHA. And to the extent that it is being, that the parcel, both parcels are thereby constrained, if they had to impose more in the back area, there's no way you can have both protection of ESHA and not block the view shed. Now, we have with respect to the view shed, a chapter in the general plan. The general plan calls out the Hollister Avenue area. It specifically cites that we're trying to protect that. In the past, when we've had this sort of thing come up, whether it's the Hilton Garden, whether it's Hollister Village, the, always been reassurances that in the planning process that we'll take care of it, not to worry, and in each and every occasion that we look at it, there is no more view shed, that it disappears. So the idea that it would automatically in the end have the view shed protected, that don't worry, it'll be okay, is, you know, we're sort of fooling ourselves in that regard, that if we try and protect the ESHA and protect, you can't have the ESHA, the high density, and the view shed in the same areas. With respect to the ESHA, this is another thing that's in our general plan, specifically called mapped in our general plan. Why would we be now saying, oh, this is an area we think we should rezone and try and include high-density residential housing? We don't need this land, and I don't know why we would make this one of our options to try and include. The next observation is the traffic one. And I appreciate, you know, I appreciate the idea that there's some value, the centrality of it, and the convenience that people could go to other areas to shop and so forth. And so I'm sympathetic to that idea. The problem that I have with it is that it is so high density right now as far as traffic goes. And forget about the, you know, vehicle miles travel. That is not what people live with. People in the area live with the density of traffic. And for instance, when you talk about how it's going to change, I remember, you know, and Mayor Protem can describe it too, the, the traffic studies when they talked about Hollister Village, that it wasn't going to have any impact. And in fact, when you put these new developments in, traffic was going to decrease. Well, I can tell you, traffic has not decreased. Traffic has increased, and anyone from the area Traffic has increased and anyone from the area, when they're going, they try and avoid that intersection. That intersection and that whole area is incredibly densely trafficked. And as such, I mean, I can ask if Charlie Ebling's around, but he can describe some of the mitigation that's now being considered, particularly I'm thinking of the Hollister Avenue widening project that's been a, a potential sitting there. Can Charlie speak to that? Is he there?
Mr. Ebling, would you like to speak to that? He is here.
Yeah, well, you can describe the Hollister Avenue widening project in which, because of the, the density of traffic in the area, there's a discussion about adding an extra lane to the, to Hollister Avenue across this same area. So yeah, could you speak to that?
Mayor Protam, Councilmember Kazin, I think in general terms, first of all, we're talking about a level of service. So we now today look at traffic with vehicle miles traveled as required by the California Environmental Quality Act. But our general plan still requires that we look at all projects with the level of service or LOS. And LOS is sort of that idea of the density of traffic and what's happening on roadway segments and at intersections. So when an intersection is very impacted and it's taking a long time for you to get through that intersection, that would have a much lower level of service and we rate that from an A to F, A being good, F being bad. Intersections such as Hollister Avenue at Stork is somewhere around a, a C to a D. So, and I think everybody in this room probably knows that, that you have to wait a long time often at Stork and Hollister and the density of traffic there is often very high. So, or, and the idea then therefore the level of service, as we would call it, would, would be low. In that corridor from around the Hollister-Stork area, to address those types of issues over time, the Department of Public Works is looking at things such as an additional lane that would go from Stork to the west to Glen Annie Road, which is part of the marketplace, kind of across the street from Costco, that shopping center, between the two shopping centers on Hollister. So that is a capital improvement project that is in our list for the future. We're also looking at improvements to the intersection itself at Hollister and Stork. But to go back to how projects would impact the intersection in particular, our general plan states that something less than a C, so a D or an F, DE or an F, would have a very low threshold of impact. So if any traffic was added to that intersection that's already poorly performing, that project is considered to have an impact and therefore would have to, part of the project would have to figure out how the project mitigates that impact, that intersection. So kind of going back to what the planning staff, Ms. Wells and Mr. Newkirk and group said, they're exactly right on how we would look at the projects in a very specific way and how they might impact the intersections and the roadway segments, especially under the level of service type impact that's required by, still required by our general plan, even though Sequa has shifted to vehicle miles traveled or VMT. So did I answer that question enough? I can keep going for days.
I picked up on that.
Okay.
The, okay, but one of the projects we have on the books would be adding an extra lane from Stork towards the down, the marketplace way and, and so forth. And we have not acted on that and I'm not enthusiastic to act on that. But the more that we see additional traffic being, or different, additional traffic being added to the area, the more it becomes something that we're forced to look at.
Excellent. That's great.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, let me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have one?
I'm not done.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm not done. So I've pointed out and I hopefully that people recognize that there's a view shed consequence that makes this action inconsistent with the general plan. There's going to be a traffic consequence to that area because the volume of traffic there already, the existing traffic, and that we have ESHA there that we can't avoid and simply having the, the landowners say, don't worry about it, isn't enough. I want to add one or two other things. And that is with respect to the process that we have. So right in front of that lot is the Pacific Oaks, the Pacific Oak Street and, but I'm talking about a rental unit. We've had very little contact. We have not heard from any of the people there or any of the people in that area. And why is that? Partly it's because when we've done these outreach things, it's outreach largely to people who are involved, people who are active, people who are participating in the city processes, people who are not participating, who are, haven't been attentive to these things, aren't getting those messages. And in that area, they only saw messages, even if they looked, they only saw messages that the city is considering rezoning or the considering, you know, housing element. They didn't know, and people living across the street don't know that we're talking about adding 300 houses and extending the road right in front of their houses. This is not a wealthy rental area. This is a poor and sort of Latino. And I guess in the interests of better public engagement as well as sort of environmental justice, that we, if we're going to be as responsive and respectful of the owners of property, we should have a process where the people who live right in front of the unit are aware of what we're about to do. And they aren't. We've not, we have not let those folks know. So I don't think it's, it's fair in that regard. And I guess, you know, I guess my last points are that we have already achieved our target numbers. We don't have to go after this one now. And I guess I would say, and I'm, and I, let me add, I've met with the, the landowners. And part of what I said is that what we do now is not the final story, that we don't have to, you know, it's not either include this in the, in the housing element now or it is never being considered again. There are other processes, some sort of development agreement or other sorts of things where we have a more open process. This is kind of a short circuit or a shortcut process where we rezone the, it without doing the regular process that we would otherwise do with a house, with a zoning change or general plan amendment. We don't really involve the neighbors. We don't really have a full understanding. It's, it's shortened. And so I would suggest that we don't conclude this now and it's something we, they work on, that we could work on, that neighbors could work on, that, you know, other groups can look at, the ESHA and so forth, but we don't just rezone it and leave it like that to be, to go forward in that way. And, and I think lastly, when we have these big issues, environmental, environmental justice and other things, these are the arguments that in many ways we've made traffic with the county. We want to be consistent with the messages that we've sent to the county regarding their property. And I think that we can do that. And I, and so I would urge others not to include this now and, you know, pick this up at another time. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Commissioner Fullerton, then Councilmember Reyes Martin, and then Commissioner Maynard. I did see all your hands going up.
Question for staff. So seeing how the state is really looking closely at all these properties, I mean, I'm concerned about the ESHA as well. I, I think we have to go with the assumption that it is there. Would the state look negatively on this site, knowing that a large part of it could potentially not be buildable?
The way the state will look at it is taking our zoning into consideration. And because we would shift, the, the ESHA would be protected, but the footprint would shift to accommodate the unit. So it's a minimum density zoning. So that, in other words, the state would allow us to count the units because despite their, you know, if there is ESHA there, that's, the evidence is included before any kind of project description, project is, when a project is proposed, then you would still get the unit count.
Okay, thank you. So just a comment, I, with the ESHA there and, and knowing that could potentially make the density even worse if they were to build, I don't support this, adding this to the RENA at this time.
Okay.
Mayor, I just want to make sure that we take public comment at some point.
Yes.
It sounds like we're in deliberations.
Excuse me?
It just, it sounds like we're in deliberations. I, I don't know. I'm, I'm very confused.
I still have some more questions to take.
Yeah.
Councilmember Reyes Martin.
I'm looking at my notes. I think most of what I have to say are comments, so I can hold if you want to. I would like to hear public comment.
Yes. Okay. Commissioner Maynard has questions.
So one question is if they were able, so the property owner is able to have the same number of units if impacted by ESHA, and so those larger, that number of units would be condensed into a smaller space, but is it correct that they would still be limited by the same height limits?
Vice Chair Maynard, yeah, the, the density allowances don't allow them to ignore our local standards unless they utilize something like density bonus or some other provision. But under our regulations, you still have to meet those standards.
And my second question, this goes back to Charlie Everhart, Charlie, still, Ebling, Ebling, Charlie Ebling. Sorry, I appreciated what you shared and I wanted to ask a quick follow-up question. So you had mentioned that if an intersection or, and Hollister and Stork already has a C to D rating, so if a project was to push that rating even lower, we would anticipate that part of the requirements of the project might be to provide financial support or support to transportation improvements. Did I understand that correctly in what you were saying?
Mayor Protam, Vice Chair Maynard, yes. And when an intersection, according to our general plan, in general, speaking in generalities, when a, an intersection is already impacted, adding any new trips to that intersection would be considered a significant impact. Therefore, because it's a significant impact, that development would have to do some form of mitigation in terms of that impact to that intersection. Now, well, if it were, for example, an unsignalized intersection and it pushed the, the intersection into needing a, a traffic signal, the, the development would pay its fair share towards that traffic signal. They wouldn't just have to pay the entire cost of a traffic signal. So there would be ways of, of looking at that cost overall, what other sources of funding would we have for that traffic signal? How do we get it built? But in the end, that development still has to mitigate its significant impacts that would have that intersection that maybe already had that deficiency or a low level of service. So yes.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, then we'll go to public comment.
We do have three speaker slips for this item. And if there are any members of the Zoom webinar who wish to speak, please raise your hand now, I'll call on you. Our first speaker in person is Derek Weston.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Derek Weston. I am one of the families that owns, interest in these seven acres. We do urge you to recommend inclusion of both properties, to have the commercial eliminated and have it all be high density housing, consistent with your recommendation with respect to 7190 Hollister. So the most important thing I want to say is that the question before you tonight is not whether these seven acres should be used for housing. Why? Because they're already approved for a combination of housing and commercial development and it is a substantial amount of development. We want to do something we think will be better. The question is, so as staff has said, the front 40% or so is for a, a general commercial and the back portion, medium, not high density residential. It's roughly equivalent to 137 units that could be built, commercial and housing, if you use how we understand the city's interpretation of commercial units. So the increment that would be allowed by what we are suggesting is 68 units. So that's not insignificant, but it's not 300. The zoning, with all properties, all properties, there are significant questions of ESH, traffic, view sheds. Those are legitimate. I repeat that, I want to emphasize, we know that those are important. The question before you tonight is whether we can better address those problems if we have a master plan and consistent zoning for the entire 10.6 acres. And we think there are very significant advantages to our ability to deal with these really legitimate issues. The most obvious is the ability to extend Pacific Oaks. There are three different owners. If there is mixed zoning, it is much more problematic. It's not impossible that we could master plan it. There are huge obstacles to doing that. With consistent zoning, you have the maximum flexibility on where amassing is put. If the ESHA has to be protected, then we have the maximum ability to deal with it. If it can be modified or should be modified, again, maximum flexibility. It's very important that with traffic, I'm sorry, if it, if it is all high density housing, we think a significant portion may be able to be senior housing. Senior housing has one half the parking requirements and less traffic impacts. There are lots of advantages, but all of those are planning issues, not zoning issues. And with all respect, you're not changing the zoning tonight. You're initiating a process to make an informed inquiry. I see my time's up. Can I have 30 seconds more?
Sure. Go ahead.
The question is whether it is better for the community to have consistent zoning and facilitate master planning. And we think that's a fairly easy question. I think there is a credibility issue with the state of California. If you have a significant property that's not included on the list, I'm concerned that that will hurt credibility. So happy to answer questions. I'm sorry, I went a little over my time. Thank you all very much and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Our second public speaker is Daniel Hockman.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Commissioners, Staff, good evening. My name is Daniel Hockman, part owner of the Parcels representing the Gershon-Hockman families. For five generations, we've lived here on the South Coast, going back over 100 years. In the 1920s, my grandfather Lester Gersh married Viola here. They quickly entered the real estate business and for decades, the Gershon-Hockman families' real estate investments have been host to community forward organizations in Galita. All while, we supported the effort for the good land to become a city. Some may remember the Living Room, which was a not-for-profit space on our land for any and all teens to hang out, play music and meet new people without the presence of drugs or alcohol. The Jubilee Christian Church is another example of our family's give back to the community. And many decades ago, the vacant sandlot over near Pacific Oaks and Hollister was the home to Dos Pueblos Little League. Now, that same league plays on virtually the same spot on beautiful fields that my family helped create with Mark Linehan, Derek Weston guiding, and in partnership with the Galita community, calling them Fields Forever. This was after we turned the fallow unused land at the corner of Stork and Hollister into the beautiful marketplace it is today. And after my family donated the first 12 acres of Gersh Park and then provided its endowment through the managing foundation. All 25 acres of Gersh Park remain an example of what privately funded, public benefit parks can be. And ongoing, my wife Mandy and I still support the park with annual donations to its operations with a personal thank you to the City of Galita for also supporting this great resource. I now alone represent my ancestors and continue the love for Galita and the South Coast. My adult life has been filled with volunteering for the good of the community. The many organizations that I have served include the local YMCA's, the Anti-Defamation League, UCSB Student Benefit Organization and religious communities. I've served as chair or president of many of those, as well as for a trade organization, a labor union local, and on both an advisory committee and as a park and recreation commissioner for the City of Santa Barbara. The advisory committee on which I served for 10 years was the Creek Restoration and Water Quality Plan Advisory Committee. It was there that I learned about creeks, waterways, storm drains, riparian habitat, et cetera. In fact, I led the hotel industry in supporting Santa Barbara's Measure B, which increased, which increased the transient occupancy tax to fund that entire program. And that support was instrumental in seeing the tax approved. And that support was instrumental in seeing the tax approved in the election vote. My goal to develop these parcels combines the needs of the community, respect for the ownership, and a reverence for sensitive habitat. Please help me bring much-needed potential workforce and senior housing to Galita on our perfectly-located vacant parcels. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final public speaker for this item is Detlev Pikert.
Thank you. Perfect timing. I was impressed.
That was.
Yep. Mayor Prode, Councilmembers, Planning Commissioners, my name's Detlev Pikert. I'm an architect and a principal with RRM Design Group. And I want to be clear, I'm speaking here tonight on behalf of this project. I am not being paid by the property owners or anyone else to be here. I'm just very interested in the process of identifying these properties, and I think that Mr. Weston has made a very compelling case for including all three of these properties together in a kind of a comprehensive zoning in such a way that it opens the door for this site to be developed as one property with all of the flexibility that is possible to provide a variety of different housing types, including, as was mentioned, senior housing, possibly employer housing, family housing, all of the, the housing needs that the community has. And I support the idea of the high-density housing for these three sites simply because we're in a housing crisis. We need the housing. The community needs the housing. The employers need housing for their employees. And so this is the opportunity to take a site that's a perfect opportunity. It's located in an ideal location to allow higher-density housing here. Now, I'm, I've been practicing architecture in the area for about 40 years, and in the last 20, 25 years, I focused my career on designing multifamily housing and affordable housing. We have a real focus and passion for affordable housing. And again, I underscore the idea that master planning this site with well-designed housing that has the opportunity to address all of the real concerns of the community, including the issues of ESHA and, of course, view corridors and alignment with the Pacific Oaks Drive. I think it's just, it would be a great opportunity missed that would actually tend to encourage more piecemeal development of this property, which is really not an ideal way to plan for the future development of the property. So again, I urge you to support the rezoning of this property to high-density housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do not have any other speakers on Zoom for this item.
Okay. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. We've heard some pretty, I think, compelling points, sort of from various perspectives on, on these parcels. But one additional item I wanted to flag, and again, this gets back to Councilmember Reyes Martin's point of sort of like pulling back in the global view, based on what we've already recommended from our previous meeting. We have other, other parcels along Hollister further west that we've already recommended for rezoning. We're encouraging at least further communication also on, on some other parcels. We have the, the site north, northwest, the Kenwood Village, references the Kenwood Village site. And then there's also, you know, pending rezones from the county. And all of those, all of those changes are going to continue to, to impact that western side of Galita. So with that, with that in mind, you know, I think as part of this process, we're asking all of our neighborhoods to, to participate in, in housing, housing opportunity and housing impacts. So I just wanted to keep that, kind of that, that big-picture process in mind. You know, I'm certainly mindful, you know, we've already made a recommendation for 7190 that we have currently, you know, medium RM residential here. So, you know, there could still be a, a project that, that comes with these combined parcels. So it's a challenging situation, but I at least just wanted to flag kind of that, that global perspective and, and try to keep in mind, kind of a, trying to take a balanced approach in terms of looking at where we're making these recommendations throughout the city.
Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Thank you. I, I want to hear from, you know, the rest of Council and, and Commission, but I wanted to just make a couple of points about kind of how I'm looking at this site. First, you know, I, I do not think that we have yet determined what we need and what we don't need. That is why I made a comment earlier about, you know, once we are through going through all of these sites, that we take that step back to look at what do we truly need and not need to meet the requirements that we have from the state. So I want to make that point. And, you know, Mayor Protem Richards really articulated very well the criteria, I think, that we are all using when we look at these sites, and it's certainly the criteria I'm looking at. For example, this is a vacant site. It has property owner interest. I am looking at all three parcels together. I think it does make sense to consider all three together. It is close to a major arterial. It is in close proximity to amenities. It is already adjacent to commercial and higher-density housing. I appreciate the comments about senior housing. I know that has been an interest. In addition to that, you know, most recently, as part of the Economic Development Committee for this council, we did a site tour to, to major employers just down the street, Redwire and Curvature. Both of those employers, among the things that they wanted to stress to this council is the need for housing for their employees who want to live and work close by. So I think there's also an opportunity for some of the local employers to have some additional housing options for their employees in very close proximity. You know, I also want to point out, you know, I'm glad that we clarified that if they're, you know, the ESHA concerns, those will absolutely be evaluated as part of a project. And I think we have an example of, of a project like Heritage Ridge where there were significant environmental questions, and those were, went through a planning process to be evaluated. And we resulted in a project that had support from the environmental community, that achieved low-income units, and that went through that planning process. So, you know, I'd like to hear from the rest of Council and Commission about this question of medium or high, but just to reiterate, I think all three parcels should be considered together. I think in many ways, this is an infill site. And, and from what I recall, that is what we said to the county, that we would prefer as infill sites along already commercial corridors. So that's where I'm having some, maybe disconnect on how we're, we're talking about these parcels. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to go, I'm just going to jump in and go here, because I'm, I'm really certainly glad we've had the extra time. Glad we didn't decide at 11:30 that night. We were all exhausted, and we don't make good decisions that late at night. But I'm, I'm glad that we've had some extra time, and although I see this as a really, an opportunity for housing, but I'm not so sure we need it now. It seems like we're okay without having this number. My concern, I live on the western end. When Hollister Villages came in and they said, oh, everybody's going to walk to work or ride bike, or, you know, they're going to work around here, I'm telling you, that intersection is horrible, and it's only going to get worse. And we're going to have to add on. We're going to have to do another lane. It just can't handle any more traffic. So I'm concerned about, about the ESHA. I'm concerned mainly about, and, and also, and actually, the, the view shed. You know, how many times have I personally voted no on a project because I promised, you know, the view shed wouldn't be interfered, it wouldn't interfere with the view shed, and that has not played out. You will hear often of promises that we're going to make things better. I don't know how you can make things better with that many cars, added cars to that whole intersection. It's just, it's just horrible. So I, I'm glad I've had the time. I, I cannot support this project, but I may be the only one, or maybe only two, but in all good conscience, I, I can't support this at this time if we don't need it. We might need to use it at another time, but it doesn't appear that we need it at this time. Councilmember Carriaco? Oh, actually, did you have your hand? No. Councilmember Carriaco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, I think a lot of good points have, have been raised here, both in favor of making a change, and, and some good points going the other way. I, I guess the first thing that I would say is, in the spirit of making observations, because there were some observations made earlier, I understand the complaints about Hollister Village. Hollister Village, just to be clear, is a retail commercial space which has housing behind it. What this space is currently zoned for is commercial space with housing behind it. And my recollection is you can do a conditional use permit on any given Tuesday to allow things such as a drive-through or other different types of commercial and retail uses. So be careful what you wish for, I guess is what I would say. This, this property is not going to stay vacant for another 50 years, the way it stayed vacant for the last 50 years. And my concern is in our, our zeal to try and do something really important, which is protect, protect ESHA, which is something I'm in favor of, and I don't have to be in favor, because it's our policy, and it's something that we're supposed to do. It's, it's our job to protect and actually restore ESHAs. And Heritage Ridge is an example of how that will happen. So I guess the first thing that I would say is, if you put this project in a position where with its current allowable uses, it has to find a way to shoehorn all 82 units that are allowed right now on these parcels, you're going to get something you're not going to want to see, and you're going to get something that impacts your view shed. So it's not a question of view shed or not in terms of keeping it the same. The question is, and this to Mr. Pikert's point, it's always here to get from Daddy Pikert, when you have more of a master plan, you have more options. You can, this is similar to some other projects we've talked about. You can very, do variable densities on different part of the project and make sure that you, by beginning with the end in mind through a master planning process, ensure that the things that are must-haves, preserving the ESHAs, preserving the view sheds, you can accomplish that. If we have a good DRB, if we have a good planning commission, if we have a good city council at the time, you can accomplish those things. But absent that, we're still going to find ourselves in a position where this site won't contribute towards our RINA numbers the way we need it to. I want to point-blank just object to the, the statement that was made earlier that we don't need the numbers. We haven't finished anything. And if we were to make a planning decision and a zoning decision where we say an infill property where there's property owner interest, it's across the street from a park, it would reduce the allowable commercial in an area, it's close to high-tech jobs, it's close to low-tech jobs, it's on a bus route where the bus runs every 10 minutes, not every hour, where you can actually get to places, where there is a really good, high-quality bike path that was put in by the former city council before I got on this council? I mean, I would have trouble explaining to the state, or really, the county, to be honest, why we wouldn't choose that site and instead would choose to put high-density in other places that don't have all of those things checked off. And to the comment that was made earlier about the county, Councilmember Reyes Martin really hit the nail on the head. When we were talking to the county about their sites, and we were encouraging them to look at the Upper State Street area, the Turnpike Shopping Center, Magnolia, none of our comments were, you know, oh, you know, don't worry about the parking, or don't worry if that might impact views, don't worry about traffic. We didn't address any of those things. We just simply said it makes more sense to concentrate development closer to where people live, work, and play, and on commercial properties, because that helps with the jobs, housing, and balance. And I thought that was one of our kind of core values as a council. So when I start hearing things about, we don't need the numbers, and let's put high-density in some places, but then not where there's actually kind of the core things, the core services, the core amenities that make a community home, I just have a fundamental policy disagreement with that. And it's, I can also say at the same time, it's okay to have a disagreement about a fundamental policy question. I, I have so much respect for the, the two people that are saying they have objections to this, because they have real lived experience as policymakers when things don't turn out the way we want. And that's okay. But there's an expression, you don't fight the last war, you fight the next war, and you fight the next war by being prepared for it. And I would say having better design review, a, a strong planning commission, and a strong city council, and strong, and continuing to keep the policies that this council and others have, have provided us with as tools, that's the best way to ensure the best result, as opposed to keeping it a mishmash of commercial and residential medium and hoping that that doesn't mean we get the wrong things. We're going to get something, but hope isn't a plan. What we're talking about is an opportunity to work with a community-minded partner who the, I think the last project they did was actually Gersh Park and Community Real Marketplace, right? Yeah, that was the last one you've done. So you're not like developers that are always developing things in Galita. When they develop something, the community benefits. There are very few families that focus on Galita that I would consider philanthropists, but that, that family is one of them. And the fact that the person who's leading this up from, on behalf of the family chaired the, the City of Santa Barbara's Creeks Committee and helped usher through the, the tool that that city uses to keep their creeks, their creeks and streams clean, recognizing they have fewer watersheds than Galita, they have kind of like three major watersheds, I think we have like 12 or more. But they did a, they've done a bang-up job in Santa Barbara because of that effort and because of those values. And if I'm going to work with anyone on a project and try and plan for it and try and deliver a good project, that's the partner I want, not an Irvine developer. This isn't an Irvine developer. This is someone that lives in this community. This is someone who has to bump into us in the grocery store, not in a Whole Foods in Orange. So I, I support this because I think it's the best, most balanced, most reasonable way to master plan a community in a way where you can put the densities and work them around in a way where you actually, at the end of the day, will still be able to see the mountains, that you'll be able to actually protect the ESHA, not with hope, but with a plan. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Mayor Richard, yeah, Mayor Protem?
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I appreciate those comments. It's, it's hard to add a whole lot to that, but I do support this, and, and this is, this is a tough one, I have to say. I mean, there, there, there are going to be impacts, obviously, to any of the developments that, that are on the list here, including this one. And, and I do understand the concerns that have been raised. I do, I, I have to say though, like, I, I'm, you know, I'm a little confused because it sounds like we're talking about, you know, taking just like an open space, like zoned open space, and turning it into and turning it into a development space. And it's already zoned for a type of development, you know? It's just the question is, is that the kind of development that we think is appropriate in this area? And I mean, the community commercial, or CG, a general commercial, you know, I'm not sure that that's the most appropriate. I don't think that's the most appropriate zoning for this area. And so with regard to view sheds and Esha, you know, those exist whether or not we change the zoning or not. I mean, we're going to be concerned about view sheds even if we don't make any change here tonight. We're going to be concerned about Esha whether or not we make any changes here tonight. So those are all issues that, yeah, I'm concerned about, too. And those are issues that our zoning code is concerned with and are addressed by our zoning code. So, you know, we will, you know, hold them to what we have in our code and hopefully our code is strong. And, you know, we've already seen, as was pointed out, we have a recent project, Heritage Ridge, that we approved not that long ago. And, you know, it checked a lot of those boxes, too, you know? I mean, it was respectful to the Esha in the area, and there are corridors that, you know, from the street, you'll be able to see the mountains still. So, and I'll have to say, you know, with regard to this one, I've spent some time going up and down Hollister in this area over the last week since Thursday. And standing in front of Hollister Village, you can see, oh, I'm sorry, which one's that? The villages? Yeah, Hollister Village, yeah, I get them confused sometimes. You can see the mountains over the residential that's in the back. What blocks the views are the commercial buildings that are close to the street. And as was pointed out, I mean, that's what we're looking at here, you know? The current zoning that we have is commercial in the front and residential in the back. And I don't think that should be our model. I think that we can do better. I think that the owners, that we know are community-minded and are from here and have demonstrated an interest in improving our community, have acknowledged that they're aware of these concerns. I think, you know, that we should take them for their word. I think they've earned that. And I have to say, you know, going back to a comment that was made earlier by Councilmember Reyes Martin, you know, I think we're at a bit of a disservice, the way this was structured in terms of the order of our review. You know, if this was one of the first ones that we had looked at, I think that this conversation would have looked a lot different. And so I do think that after we get to the end of our list, which is hopefully tonight, that we can go back and re-review some of the discussion that we had and see if it still makes sense to keep all of those on and whether we need them or not. But for those reasons, I do support this, and I think that I would support having it all, all three properties zoned as RH.
Commissioner Maynard, and then Councilmember Kazin has had his hand up for a while.
Okay. I'll keep my comments brief because I think a lot of what I would like to say has been said. But I will echo what has been said about not counting until we're done this process. The last time we were here, we stayed until 11 o'clock at night. There was a lot of sites that we talked about that we didn't have a chance to fully discuss. I know that we have a stack of speaker slips over there to rehash some of what was discussed last time and some sites that haven't been discussed yet. I don't think we have all the information on the table yet, and I don't think we know where our counts are. So I do think it's very important that we look at each of these separately, make our decisions, and then go back at the end, because I don't think it's equitable for us to put more pressure on the later sites on the list and not apply that same pressure to the ones that we happen to review first. So it's important that we look at this from an equitable perspective. For many of the reasons that have already been discussed, I would support high-density residential on all three of the 7190 spots, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Councilmember Kazin, and then Councilmember Miller.
All right. I'm not sure where to begin with this. I mean, if we're talking about finding what is equitable, we have 315 on that corridor before we talked about this additional one being added, which is adding another 205 units. So this is far and away more than any other district, any other area. So if you're looking at it in terms of, are we doing it equitably, it's hard to imagine that that's the case. As far as, like I said, as far as are we treating the neighbors fairly, I don't think that we are. And I don't think that the neighbors in Pacific Oaks and that general area, the rental units all along Pacific Oaks Road are aware that we're talking about doing this. There is going to be a change there. There's a reason this wasn't developed before, and the reason is, in large part, there was Esha. That prohibited or inhibited, more accurately, the developers from going forward. But as Councilmember Karyakko pointed out, for 50 years, it hasn't been developed, and there's reasons behind that. I would add, this isn't about who owns the land, it's about the process that we use for determining how to go forward. And that process is going to be one, not just that we make a rezone recommendation here, but we do something where the community can participate in some fashion. There has been, you know, the idea that fighting the last war, I'm a little, sort of, anyway, the idea that we're not fighting the last war. We should use experience. We should know what happened before to make our decisions now. And what we know from the last time is that developments going forward have essentially blocked the view shed. We want to preserve view corridors, and I don't think it's going to be possible to do that in this instance when you're putting in high-density housing. When you're filling that in high-density housing and extending the road through what looks like the Esha and have large, multi-story housing on both sides of it, it doesn't seem, there's going to be 300 houses over there. I don't, that's the size of the Hollister Village. I just don't see how you can say, we're going to preserve the Esha, we're going to maintain the view shed, and it's not going to have an impact on the quality of life in the area for the neighborhood. The idea, I forgot what the comment was about Irvine, that Irvine was brought up, but we don't want that to be our development model. We don't want to have these, adding another lane is the required mitigation because we've done this and we have to keep expanding these wide lanes. So in Old Town, we're making it one lane, but in West Galita, we add lanes, and we add congestion. So what I would say is that we can look at this going forward, not in terms, though, of adding it to this process here where we do a rezone as part of our submission to the state, that we do it in a more deliberate way. There are more consequences, there are more impacts, there's more sort of things to understand, and I don't think it's being done in the right way. And so what I would urge is that we don't include it in this package, and we encourage discussion through development agreement and other sort of approach like that with the landowners, but that it isn't included, sort of helter-skelter here. And that's it.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. I'm going to be brief here. I support the project to be rezoned RH, and my reasons are the master plan opportunities to protect what we need to protect. Leaving commercial in the front and RM, residential medium in the back, is a risk as to what could get built there. And as far as needing numbers or not needing numbers, I feel better having more numbers right now by including this and then see where we end up at the end of the day, or end of the evening tonight. So that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Chapman?
Thank you. So I want to start off to say that I also support all three parcels being rezoned to RH. One of the things I wanted to address about traffic impacts is that this is the kind of development that is actually in our housing element, listing, you know, they call it transit-oriented development, but it actually helps enhance the feasibility of enhancing transit through that corridor. And when we talk lane widening, we want to think about that there may be another way that actually is much less cost to the city, in that by sort of developing along the arterials as they recommend, you enable more transit riders, you may be able to enable more frequency and quality of the routes, which would actually substantially increase ridership. I fear that there's sort of a fatalistic approach, that the ridership will never change, that the sort of amount of single occupancy vehicle trips will never change. But we have things that we can do to try to give more opportunities, more choices for people as a city. You know, when it comes to Hollister Village, people may drive pretty short distances because that area is very, I'm sorry, Charlie, but the area is very hostile to pedestrians. I don't know if you've ever tried to walk, say, from, you know, like Cortona Point's apartments to somewhere in Communeral, but it's a gauntlet. You've got slip lanes to cross, you've got many, many lanes of traffic to cross, and in action, I think that adding more lanes to that road would only increase the hostility to pedestrians and cyclists in that area. I just wanted to point that out as to what's possible. And allowing for this housing here and this kind of development would actually help enable that and hopefully eventually reduce traffic through that street. And another thing I wanted to point out is, when it comes to VMT, we're not in a vacuum, and you need to consider the regional picture. Many, many, many people are driving very far from Carpentaria, from Lompoke, from even further away to get to work, and that is part of that jobs housing imbalance we talk about so much. And housing will contribute towards putting that in balance, which I have to imagine has a likely effect of decreasing VMT when you consider the region. So, yeah, for these reasons and for many of the reasons that others have mentioned, I support zoning all these to RH. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments before I do the straw vote? Okay, well, we'll start with Commissioner Fullerton.
I do support housing there. I just think that increasing it to RH, I don't support that. I support leaving it as it is. But I do think there could be a really good project there, and I think it is a good location for housing, but just due to the congestion and other issues in that area, I don't support.
Commissioner Chapman?
I support all three parcels to RH.
Mr. Smith?
This is a difficult one, but ultimately, I don't recommend the change to RH at this time. I would just comment that if it is the will of the commission and the council, that we pull back and potentially revisit other southwestern sites if this change is made.
Commissioner Maynard?
I support the shift to RH for all three sites and would also look forward to a discussion about a broader look at neighborhoods as a whole when we complete the process. But as we are going site by site, I would recommend that this be RH in all three sites.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes, I support all three sites to be zoned, rezoned RH. Thank you.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
I appreciate all of the comments and discussion. With my background and education, I have to just start by saying equitable does not mean equal, and I just want us to remember that. Those are not one of the same. Every parcel has unique characteristics that we are considering with variety of criteria for the task that we have before us. I do support all three parcels at RH.
Mayor Protam?
Yeah, all three at RH.
I will not support RH.
All three at RH, and I just want to state for the record, I'm not under any illusions that there will be no change to Western Galita. There will be change. That will absolutely happen, but we're in the process that we're in, and the state has the requirements that they have, and there's just so few vacant parcels that are on transit corridors where there is owner interest. And that's how I get here.
Councilmember Kazin?
Yeah, there will be. We're turning this into another Orange County or LA, and I'm saying no, and I'm disgusted.
Okay. I think staff has direction on that one?
I think we have direction on that one. And that brings us to our last site, from the staff report. We talked about 625 Dara Road.
Excuse me, Ms.? Before you get going.
Do you have to recuse yourself?
I do. Because I live in close proximity to this parcel, I am subject to the Political Reform Act and therefore am required to recuse myself.
But before you leave, we were going to skip to the last slide because we did already discuss this at the last meeting.
That's what I thought.
And we received direction, doesn't mean we can't talk about it at the very end, but the one site that we haven't talked about yet is 6950 Hollister.
Mayor, I think there's a decision to be made because I know that there are a lot of people who are waiting to speak on this site.
So are we, so I'm confused. What are you suggesting we do at this point?
I guess it's up to you. We have not yet discussed 6950 Hollister, the last site on the tables.
Well, if we just, that's an alternate, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so why don't we finish the alternates and then go on? So, Councilmember Reyes Martin, you can stay for this next one.
And so this site, I don't believe there's a conflict, but I am looking to the Assistant City Attorney for confirmation.
Mayor, is there a chance that we could also take a five-minute break either before this one or the next one? Just, we've been going for a long time.
Do you want to take a break now? Is that?
Either now or before the next one, but...
Maybe, let's get through this one and then we'll take.
Okay.
Definitely, how about a 10-minute break?
There are no conflicts associated with this site.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Anzi.
Mayor Perotti, councilmembers and commissioners, so this is our last alternative site, and it's close to the historic Hollister intersection. It's an existing office space, and we flagged it because we've heard some inquiries about residential on the site or transitioning over, which is something we expect, we might see some with our office stock. So right now, it's in our inventory because it's zoned OI, which allows up to 20 units per acre as part of mixed use. So there's also the potential for any future development to go ahead as it's zoned and with a high proportion of residential, as long as there's an office and institutional component. However, with a rezone, we could up our count a little bit, and it would transition to lower income. But we haven't had explicit property desire for this rezone yet. We've had inquiries, there's been some development, we've sought out that input, but we don't have it at this point.
Okay. Okay, questions? No questions? Public participation?
I don't have any speaker slips for this property, but if there are any members of the Zoom webinar who wish to speak, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you. And I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. Back to commissioners for discussion. Councilmember Chapman?
I think I'm applying a similar rationale, that because we don't have any interest and because it's got an existing use, I think the likelihood of it being accepted in the housing element is not high. And so I think I would lean towards keeping it as is, similar to the other properties with a similar situation.
I'm kind of agnostic, just because they can do exactly what we're kind of talking about here with the existing zoning, so it doesn't feel... So it doesn't feel like it would be taking anything from them. So I'm kind of, I can go with it or against it, and I kind of want to hear what my other colleagues have to say.
Mayor Perot.
Given that we don't have owner interest, that's been mentioned, I'm leaning toward leaving it. If they want to put housing, it looks like there's an opportunity for them to do that, and that would be great. But I don't think zoning it into RH would that not make it into a non-conforming use then to have the existing office on there?
Mayor Perot, that's correct.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I'm not in favor of changing it.
Commissioner Maynard.
I'll keep it brief and say that I agree with my colleagues.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
I agree as well.
Yes, I agree.
And I will agree.
Mr. Smith.
I agree status quo. I do agree as well.
Councilmember Kasdan.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. All right. Any public speakers? No? We asked all that.
We checked for them already.
Okay. Then we are going to take a 10-minute break. We're going to bring this meeting back to order. Okay, at this time, there will be now the additional opportunity to discuss the candidate or one candidate or alternate sites that were previously discussed at the July 20th meeting, or additional sites that are not on the staff report list that the council or the commission would like to consider. If there are any sites to be discussed, we will consider the recusal process prior to each discussion. Okay. So I think we're ready to go. Ms. Wells, do you want to start us off? Or Ms. Kai, do you have a recusal here?
My understanding is we're going to discuss 625 Dara next, and we do have a recusal.
Yes, we do have a number of speaker slips, and I think we have bundled.
Let me do that. Let me do my recusal first.
Yeah, by address. And if we were to start with the Dara Road, then we will need that recusal.
Okay. Yes?
Yes.
Just to restate again for the record, because I live in close proximity to this property, I'm subject to the Political Reform Act, which requires my recusal on this discussion.
I think we're ready.
Okay. So we do have several speaker slips for this item. Our first public speaker is Greg Jenkins. And if there are any members of the Zoom webinar who wish to speak, please raise your hand and we will call on you.
Excuse me? Three minutes, yes. Are we on? Good evening, council and commissioners. I'm Greg Jenkins. I'm a local architect, former county planning commissioner, former City of Galita planning commissioner. For sensible planning reasons, I strongly object to the rezoning of 625 Dara Road from RS to RH because there are other unquestionably more appropriate sites available. The Dara parcel is remotely located and an unreasonable walking distance away from reliable rapid transit, businesses, shopping centers, entertainment, restaurants, and storage units. Vehicle miles traveled to visit these community services from Dara Road would cause significant impact and even greenhouse gas emissions. Let's compare a more logical site. 7190 Hollister Avenue and the two adjacent parcels to the east are significantly better suited to meet our community's needs for affordable housing with minimal environmental impact or community impact. These parcels are directly adjacent to reliable rapid transit, businesses, shopping centers, entertainment, restaurants, storage units, and would provide close and convenient job opportunities for the residents to work without getting in the car. Plus, these sites are much closer to UCSB. They're even close to hotels for their out-of-town guests and families. The Dara site does not benefit. Some of you have suggested that we need to spread the impact of high-density housing equally around our city. I believe this notion is based more on politics rather than good planning. Derek Weston, one of the owners of the Hollister parcels, is ready, willing, and able to provide his much-needed housing, to provide this much-needed housing stock. He has a proven track record of philanthropy and a strong sense of community. With all due respect, over the past 30 years, the owner of 625 Dara Road has failed to proceed with his approved 12 single-family homes, and he has allowed his property to fall into a state of blight. The city, our immediate neighborhood, nor the state have any assurance that he will be able to perform now better than he has over the past 30 years. I encourage you to place our housing needs in appropriate locations of our community and in the hands of individuals and developers who can effectively partner with the city. Dropping 127 high-density units into middle of a single-family neighborhood on Dara Road causing environmental impact makes no sense whatsoever.
Mr. Jenkins.
Please choose wisely.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Melana Willis.
Thanks for having me. My name is Melana Willis, and I live in District 1 of Galita. Speaking tonight to advocate for safe, environmentally sustainable urban planning that includes high-density housing and affordable housing in areas that are connected with existing public transport corridors and integrated into local commerce. I think this type of thoughtful urban planning is what Galita needs to meet our growing housing requirements. Properties such as 7190 Hollister are well-suited for this goal, but unfortunately, the Dara Road property is not. On a bird's-eye view, it looks great. It looks like it can check off the requirements you need for high-density housing and affordable housing. However, if this was during the school year and I could invite you to come to our neighborhood on a bustling, you know, Tuesday morning for drop-off or pickup, you would see the roads and sidewalks filled with strollers, little children riding bikes, riding scooters, walking across the road, across the sidewalk. You'd see cars zooming in to drop off, buses coming in. Already, at this point, I think that our crossing guards should get hazard pay because it's a really vital, busy spot. But it's working out, we're okay. But I think adding traffic would be really unsafe for our children. Our children are heading to preschool right next to Kellogg School and then biking to and from Galita Valley Junior High. So it's just a really, kind of a vulnerable neighborhood in terms of safety. Also, Kellogg School is an awesome school right there. It's one of the biggest schools in Galita, and it's getting, straining its boundaries, and it's getting so full that unfortunately, the school district recently decided to move part of our autism program to an under-enrolled school in another part of the city. That was a huge loss to the Kellogg community. I believe if we brought in high-density housing and brought in an influx of new families right next door to Kellogg, we would, of course, need to accommodate them. But then who would be displaced? More children from the autism program? Would we have to rezone and not be able to welcome our children from Old Town, which is a huge part of what creates the diversity of Kellogg School? So I think for the safety of our neighborhood and the integrity and diversity of our school, it would be very wise to reconsider and not have high-density housing on that property and scale back to keep it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Casey Lynch.
I'll be really brief. I agree. I really don't think that this should be, have the new designation. It's not appropriate for the neighborhood. It's not what the neighborhood was intended to be to begin with, and it has a designation of being 12 homes, and that's how it should stay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kristi Smith, followed by Jan Scheffler.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. I have something you're prepared. You've already gotten it, I think, emailed to you. But I wanted to make a couple extra points, and one was the busyness of the street. This year alone, two cars have been totaled on Stokanion, not by drunk drivers, but just by bad drivers. And so that's one thing. Another thing, Mr. Kasdan, I appreciate you looking out for the people of Pacific Oaks. I think that's really admirable. But I can point out by show of hands, if necessary, that none of us, not one that I believe, got notified of the Dara property in the meeting last week. So that was very disappointing to us all. And this is only by word of mouth and next door that we are here tonight. Let me quickly read some of the points here that we made. We would like to strongly oppose the, this is on behalf of myself and my husband, the proposed high-density residential zoning change for Dara. Approving a large-scale development on such a small property in the middle of a neighborhood is wildly inappropriate. It would not be compatible with the neighborhood, its size, bulk scale would not be appropriate for the neighborhood. It could not be more different than the existing adjoining development. The architecture could not respect the privacy of neighbors considered of private views or protective of solar access off-site. This scale of development would add significantly more cars to the neighborhood and to Galita as a whole on a daily basis, as there is no public transportation near it, nor are there any jobs or shopping. Everything would be driving distance away. The carbon footprint of the neighborhood and of Galita would soar. For the amount of units being proposed, I assume there would be multi-story buildings involved. The property is on a hill over the rest of the neighborhood. You would be creating a highly visible Galita landmark. The development would be highly intrusive on the already existing neighborhood. We went on to talk about Kellogg School, but that was just covered. Said we had a neighborhood meeting last night, and thank you, Mr. Kiriakko, for joining us, to discuss this. Two of the attendees said that they had received notice from the city about this no one else had. Okay, I've already talked about that. In closing, please choose a more appropriate site for high-density development like 7190 Hollister Avenue and the two adjacent parcels to the east, where a populous island in the middle of a single-family homes would not be created. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Jan Scheffler.
Okay, mayor, council members, and the planning commission people. Most of what I was going to say has been said, so I'm only going to add a few things. With 127 units and two people in each unit, it's going to be two cars, and then that's going to be 254 vehicles. And do you think there's going to be parking allotted for 254 vehicles when the space there isn't adequate if you're going to use it for all those units? So that would be my thing, besides the traffic study and what's going to be done for the mitigation of the problems that would arise there. We've lived in our house 50 years, so we've been through all the other submittals of proposals for that property. And I'm surprised that it's even open for this discussion of housing, dense housing. So I can just say historically that we had the DRB. It went before them. The people that were on the city council and the DRB said no and suggested things that could be made, that housing could be built on Mr. McHaleian's property. So I'm saying, well, he had 2007, 2016. He was trying to sell it on his own property by the lots, and it didn't happen. So now it's at this point where the state's telling us what our neighborhood should look like. We have politicians telling us what appliances we're supposed to use. So I mean, it gets a little crazy and insane, so I'm done. Thank you very much for listening.
Okay, and our final speaker slip for this item is Taylor Smith. Also, as a reminder, if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand and I'll call on you. And I, is this for Dara Road? Okay. I now have another speaker slip in addition.
Mayor, council members, planning commission, thank you. It's been really interesting to be here tonight. It's my first one of these meetings, and I think probably for many of us here, it's one of our firsts. It's been interesting to see the way you all have been thinking about the different opportunities. I'm really sorry that we missed last week because it sounds like that's where a lot of the action was. And I was really glad towards the end of the meeting when someone said, oh, well, these haven't been decided. Because so many times throughout the last four hours, people have said, no, we don't need to worry about that one because we're okay with the numbers that we have. But I think you've got a lot of people here who are worried about the decision that was made, seemingly made last time about the recommendation for 625 Dara. I think the points that have been made about how inappropriate it feels for the traffic patterns and the sustainability of the neighborhood really ring true. You know, you've got a, just looking at it, I mean, those roads don't go anywhere. You're not next to a thoroughfare. You're not next to public transportation and the traffic jam that it's going to cause. You've got a left-hand turn signal about 100 yards away on Cambridge. You're going to have to create another one of those. And as has been mentioned, it's up on a hill. You know, you're going to have a lot of, it's going to be a tall structure and a lot of, a lot of cars. So I'm concerned about it, and I think, you know, it feels like there are better alternatives. The 7190 Hollister parcels feel like they're, you know, they're set up well for that. You know, that parcel that's next to Elwood School, I know it's challenging with the battery company, but, you know, that one feels like it's really well set up. This one just feels like you're jamming a high-density, you know, residential setting in an area that can't support it, either through public transportation or traffic. So I hope you'll reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I now have three additional speaker slips. If anybody else in the audience wishes to speak, please do fill out one of these speaker slips. I have some over here, and they are also in the foyer out there. But my next speaker for this item is Steve Vandenberg.
Good evening, council members and commissioners. Yes, a hornet's nest has really been kicked around the Dara Road property that you've been considering. And we had a well-attended meeting last night in the middle of the summer with 50 people from the neighborhood. It probably would have been 100 if it had been held in October. We're very hopeful that tonight, based on the comments that you've heard and the willingness of the 7190 Hollister folks, we're hopeful that you'll make a switch here. You'll take out 625 Dara from the list that you approved seemingly by a straw poll last week. You'll put in the Hollister project instead. We're hopeful that that will be the outcome tonight. Otherwise, those of us that live around the Dara project are going to have to do things like start contacting HCD directly and telling them that that property is really not buildable. We're strongly opposed to it and will fight. And there's not going to be anything built on it in the next eight years because there's not community support and there's a large amount of opposition. We don't want to be in the position of having to do that and contact HCD directly and speak against our own housing element and encouraging them essentially to sink it and send it back to you for another redo. So we're hopeful that tonight you'll just make the switch and we can leave here tonight with community-wide consensus that we have a housing element we can send up to HCD and get approved. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next public speaker is Alana Harper, followed by Denise Tisdale.
Hello. My name to, my claim to fame is that I was born in Santa Barbara, and I've lived over 50 years in Galida on one side of that Green Belt on the north, on the west side of that Green Belt area that actually has entry from Stow Canyon and exit from Stow Canyon, even though it's called the DARA Residence. The main thoroughfare is on a Stow Canyon. So yes, 50 of us were together last night, and 25 were here when the meeting started. I don't know how many still remain, but we feel there's too many people in this high-density area, and it's not appropriate to our neighborhood design. And some topics have been covered, but what I'll say is that now our Green Belt is now a public park. It's a huge play area that is invasively positioned just a few paces from homes. Certain play equipment has resulted in tremendous noise pollution. The sound level in our area has changed from quiet to screaming, often prolonged blood-curdling screaming, and people come in cars from outside of the area, causing parking and mail delivery issues. The sound level at the park is often intrusive and problematic, and we now close our doors and windows and don't use our yard during the extensive screaming times. So I'm sure that 127 units with X amount of people and X amount of cars would up the ante on this difficult situation in our neighborhood. So, and then also, I live two blocks from, two houses from Cathedral Oaks, and myself and most of all of our neighbors do commute to the south through the neighborhood. So I feel that a heavily impacted area would, residents would also be commuting through the neighborhood, and there's not, this is adverse, and it's dangerous to our students in the area. So let's see. So we don't feel there's a proper public access for transportation or biking or all the important things, the green, the green, what do you call it, emissions, because people will be using their cars to get to the freeway and to get to the businesses on Kyrial. That's basically what I have to say. I hope I gave you some new information.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Denise Tisdale, followed by Andy Rad.
Hello. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I think many of us have already shared all of our views, but be one more person to hopefully help you understand. We all love the city of Galida. We love where we live. And I think first and foremost, it felt very offensive to have no idea that this was going to be happening. And that very quickly, a quick discussion was occurred, and a new rezoning was, what do you want to take a straw vote? And we're being rezoned for what is really an inappropriate thing to happen. And I've heard consistently, as I sat here for the last four hours, the concerns that some of you really made. Kazdin continuously commenting about view shed and traffic congestion, et cetera, et cetera, and the people not being represented. We knew nothing about this. We have not been represented, and our representative has to be recused. So I'd hope you realize that my biggest thing I'd like to ask you, have each one of you that are going to vote on this seen the property face-to-face? Have you presently gone and walked into the neighborhood? You've talked about a lot of these other properties, and yet you're very familiar with them. But I'd like to know, are you familiar with our neighborhood? Have you driven it? Have you looked at it? Have you actually seen the impact that it would have? One of the things is if you rezone, you haven't done an environmental impact. That's not a requirement, nor is the traffic impact. And the school cannot handle it. You've heard that as well. We have Fairview and Kyrial that is already a nightmare. And how do you imagine another 127 units, which is how many more people is going to impact just that traffic, traffic stop alone? I wish that we had had more time, that this could be planned out. There's a lot of other places where we could put some really good housing planned out. But anyway, I'd like you to challenge you, before you vote for this property, come take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two more speaker slips. Our next speaker is Andy Rad.
Good evening, council members. I'm here to talk about my neighborhood. I live on Cathedral Oaks. My wife and I watched a white pickup truck go over 100 miles an hour and rear-end a car and kill two people in our neighborhood. We've had about five deaths on Cathedral Oaks in the last two years. By increasing the volume of people living on DARA on this property, everyone will have to exit either on DARA or Stow because there's homes on the other two sides of this property. This will pretty much force traffic to go northbound on DARA onto Cathedral Oaks, either hang a left, which is dangerous because that portion of Cathedral Oaks is on an uphill slant and a left-hand curve. That is what causes most accidents. I've had a car that's been totaled because I was parked on Cathedral Oaks. We've witnessed deaths. It is not a safe street. And if we increase the volume of vehicles going on DARA up to Cathedral Oaks, hanging a left or a right, I guarantee there's going to be more fatalities. It's just a matter of numbers. The other issue is that the public transit is across the street on the north side of Cathedral Oaks, which means anyone walking from this property onto Cathedral Oaks will have to cross Cathedral Oaks to get to the bus stop, which poses another problem. If they put a light right there, it's going to cause more issues. That's why in the last 30 years that I've lived there, they've never put a light, even though we've had numerous accidents there, because a light creates other issues. So stoplight or stop sign will not solve the problem. And increasing the number of people living there only creates bigger issues. It creates bigger issues for the school, which can't accommodate all the numbers. It creates bigger issues for the park that's there, because if you're talking about skyline and views, this property is on an elevated plateau, and everyone in the park would not be able to literally see the sky, literally see the sky, because there's hills behind there, and all the residences would be looking up at either a two- or three-story building from their backyards. So I hope you reconsider this and leave the property as is with, I believe, 12 residential-approved housing units. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final public speaker for this item is Martha DeLeon.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for creating a space for us to talk about, you know, our concerns over the property. I actually live across the street from the 625 DARA Road. I'm deeply concerned over the proposed rezoning of the property without, and actually, I'm not sure if this is true, because I found out about this whole rezoning, you know, dilemma on Sunday through neighbors, through next doors, which was also a little upsetting, not having, you know, the city reach out to us about what they were planning to do with this property. With that being said, I'm concerned over the rezoning of the property without first performing thorough assessments and outreach into the community to evaluate the impacts it'll have on our community environment, traffic, property values, and quality of life. I'm also disheartened that there has been little outreach by the owner to the local community to gain support and explain the rationale for the effort. A decision like this should not be made in a vacuum and should not be made without the involvement of the local community stakeholders, such as myself and other residents in the Kellogg area. I wholeheartedly agree in what Councilman Kyle Richards commented in a previous meeting in that I don't think this is an appropriate land use designation for this parcel. The current zoning designation is the appropriate land use designation for this parcel. The current zoning designation, which was approved decades ago, should be utilized for development of single-family homes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have no more speaker slips, nor are there any hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you for that. Council and commissioners, I have a question about the current, wasn't there another project that was on this site? It was going to be for seniors, assisted living. Where is that at? I mean, is that, do we know anything about where that went or what happened with that? And is this current, that right now it's the only the 12 above moderate income homes?
Madam Mayor, there was a general plan amendment initiation to medium-density residential. There has not been a project application, to my knowledge, following that. Previously, there were applications that were considered by the DRB for residences on each of the 12 undeveloped lots.
Okay. Any other?
That was my question.
Sure. No? Okay.
I have one. So the mayor brings up a good point, which was we had a prior meeting, I think it was December of 2020, where the property owner proposed that the city rezone up from single-family residential to medium-family density. And the property owner basically said, if you give me the rezone, I will give you a senior residential care project. I don't know that a lot of headway has been made with that. What I do know is that there has been a letter of support from the property owner to move up to, to high-density. And I guess my question is, setting aside for the moment whether medium or high or single-family would be the right zoning designation, is there, because we're losing the GPA initiation process where you can basically trade the zoning for the project, is there a tool, we've talked about overlays a little bit tonight, is there a tool like a senior care overlay that exists or could be created that would assure the community who's concerned about what's going to come with a project that would essentially run with the property and require the project to be delivered, as has been discussed in the past? Is that, is that a tool that we have now or we could have? And how would that work?
Councilmember Kiriakko, the, we don't have a tool like that in place. We certainly could write one into a revised housing element. That would take some analysis. It would be isolating one special needs category, and then the state would require that we look at this from a fair housing perspective, and we would have to have analysis that would show that the site was the right location for that and that there was a need, and we would have to quantify that need. So there would be some hurdles to jump through and analysis, analysis to jump through, and the conclusion would have to support the overlay. So we'd be, you know, reverse-engineering it in a way, but we'd still have the facts that would have to support the overlay.
Is that process similar to the one that needs to occur for us with another project that is currently proposed with an overlay for affordable housing? Because I don't think we currently have an affordable housing overlay in our toolbox.
I think, are you referring to the Fairview site?
I'm trying not to mention the specific sites, just in case there's a conflict, because I can't remember who has them and who doesn't.
Right. Okay, so that, there's another overlay that is specific to retaining the existing use as, you know, protecting that existing use until they change it over to residential. And that, but, and that did affect our ability to count the site for lower income.
But is that something that currently exists, and we've been able to already employ it, or is that something that staff has a work effort needed to actually create it?
Staff will have to prepare that as a program in the housing element.
So hypothetically, while you are on that work effort, you could also incorporate a senior residential care overlay?
We could do that. It would be a little bit different because the overlay for high-density residential is a little bit, it's a little different from one category of special needs.
Okay. All right, that's it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Maynor?
Oh, I thought he said. The site is very challenging in a number of ways. And so I'm going to sort of talk to two sides of this and an effort to sort of think through some of the challenges, rather than necessarily to make an argument towards one stance at this moment. We've looked at a number of sites over the last two media, the last meeting and this meeting. And one thing that I think we were challenged to do in a lot of the public comment letters was to really try to look at the facts and try to be as equitable as possible in how we assess each of these sites. There was a number of concerns about distance to parks, distance to schools, distance to stores. But we also did approve projects or proposed straw voted at the last meeting, some projects in northwest Galida that would have very similar distances. And so I actually went into Google Maps to double-check all of my numbers, make sure I'm not making assumptions. This project is a 20-minute walk from the downtown area of New Galida and the central Kyrial shopping centers. It's a five-minute bike ride. Looking at some of the other projects that we straw-pulled up for upzoning, 25 minutes, six-minute bike ride. So we are looking at some similar numbers in terms of distances. There, in terms of transit, we heard earlier today and had a long debate about a number of developments around the western side of Galida. By my count, right now, we're looking at up to 520 units in Elwood, 285 in northwestern Galida. The intersection of Hollister and Stork is between a Level C and a Level D, we heard today. This area has similar traffic concerns. Are the traffic concerns worse than projects we're also looking at upzoning, areas that we're also looking at upzoning? So I think those are some things that I'm thinking about there. There are, school capacity is another component that came up. But again, I look at that growth in western Galida, and I wonder where the school capacity issue is going to be more significant in the western or the eastern area based on the development that we're seeing. Each part of our community has seen growth. Tree Farm Project was roughly, and I'll do this based on my numbers that I was able to find online, but about Tree Farm was about 134 units, Cortona, 171, Hollister Village, 274, Heritage Ridge, 332, Old Town Village, about 175. We've been seeing growth spread throughout Galida in addition to what's proposed here. So again, trying to look at like, what are the unique challenges that we're seeing in this site that may not be as consistent with other sites? There are, were some notes of sewer problems, and that's something that is unique here that I hadn't heard in other spaces, but I don't have enough information on it, but that would be something I'd be interested in learning more about. I have walked the site. I have driven around the neighborhood. One of the homework assignments I did in preparation for this housing element is I visited every site that was on the candidate and alternate sites, so I have been through the neighborhood. The site is razed, so there are some, some issues with the grade of the site already being high, though I did also note that at least in some areas of the height, there were some good tall trees that provided some view shading as well between the property and the neighborhood. That does not go around the whole property, but there were some places where that was available. So these are some of the things that I'm thinking about here. I'm also thinking about what was asked about the shift, the general plan amendment initiation that was started. And so one of my thinking And so one of my thinkings is potentially to be looking at codifying the RM status for this site, rather than necessarily going fully back to the RS, but creating some balance with the concerns that have come in. I will also note, we have heard significant public feedback and public concern in addition to the folks in the room tonight, from the northwest neighborhood, from the north, the southwest neighborhood, and from this neighborhood. So every neighborhood where there's been a major development proposed, we've heard significant concerns from the community about growth. It's another thing that I weigh heavily and struggle with in terms of, as we're looking at some of these projects. I'm very excited to hear more from my colleagues. I've not decided on this, so I'm excited to hear the discussion tonight. But those are some of the things that are going through my mind.
Councilmember Caston?
Okay, well, I guess one good thing is by bringing everyone together beside somewhere else was going to be a good place to develop, namely West Galita, that we have that ability to unify everyone on an alternative site. I guess, I mean partly, I could repeat some of the same things. Some of the issues that people raised are the same things I heard from my colleagues elsewhere. Size, bulk, and scale, parking, all of those would be brought out in a planning process, so no need to worry. I can also, you know, same with schools. We didn't talk about schools anywhere else, including Elwood, which is already quite diverse. We're talking about adding quite a lot of people there. The questions about access to supermarkets and so forth, we didn't raise any of that. We talked about Kenwood and the, what was going on. But ultimately, in some ways, you know, it comes down to partly this for me, that here's a neighborhood that doesn't have any dense housing in general. And people were arguing, keep it as 12 mansionettes. And are we really saying that if a neighborhood doesn't have any high-density sort of housing? And mind you, we're talking about from the medium density to the higher density, we're talking 43 units. That's the big change. Are we really saying that you're immune? That if a housing, if a neighborhood doesn't have any kind of more dense housing, that they don't have to bear any of that? That it's all going to be imposed, or all be included in other neighborhoods, particularly those areas that don't have the members, the community members, who are going to turn out and who are going to gather together and have a unified campaign? I mean, that's, that's not fair. So I would suggest to think about that. But I also would just add that that idea of the senior overlay is, since the owners of the 7190 simply expressed that that was one of their goals, then I would say if we're doing, talking about doing senior overlays, that would be helpful. Hypothetically, maybe they do drive less, maybe there's less impact. So if that is going forward, then at least look at a senior housing overlay there. That's all.
Commissioner Smith?
I just wanted to note, I think where some of this struggle is coming from frankly is that, you know, to some degree, we have a segregated city. You know, the north, kind of our northwest quadrant is primarily a single-family residential. And the disadvantage of that is that that tends to foster de facto segregation. So there are disadvantages to that. You know, there's data that shows that communities or cities and neighborhoods that are developed after the Civil Rights Act passed and after the fair housing law passed tend to be more integrated and tend to have more of a mix of housing types. But yet, so we're, you know, so it's, you know, we're kind of juggling with like some of the historical legacy of our different neighborhoods and just, you know, trying to strike the right balance. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, that, you know, there's both sort of opportunity and disadvantage in that setup. So I would concur with Commissioner, Vice Chair Maynard, that, you know, in the initial, one of the reasons we recommended at the last meeting to consider the move to RH is because what the state is looking for right now is zoning that will accommodate the density for low, lower-income housing. And if this parcel were zoned at the RM level, we can't, it would count towards the numbers for like, I think it's the moderate or above moderate. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't count towards like this whole process that staff has brought to us is for us to have zoning at these higher densities. So that is part of the reason that informed our recommendation the last time. That said, you know, my understanding, right? Staff has said there's already been a general plan, at least initiation process towards the move towards RM. And we've reconsidered the parcel, those parcels along Hollister. So I'm not sure how the math turns out, but we could adjust the recommendation back for this parcel to RM, knowing that we got additional numbers in the other spot. But again, you know, the disadvantages, you know, we might, we might lose some numbers there.
Councilmember Karyaco?
So I'm still making up my mind, and I'm still torn between RM and RH. But I think, you know, and my apologies to the neighborhood who I listened to the other night, but I just don't think status quo works anymore. So I'm between RM and RH. But to Commissioner Smith's point, Chair Smith's point, because she made a really good one, how things happened matters sometimes. The biggest reason why that particular part of Galita, kind of that north-central and north kind of eastern part of Galita is largely single-family is because A, Kachuma happened at a particular time, and B, the descendants of the Stows, the Van Horns, sold a huge tract of land at a particular point in time in exchange for preserving Rancho Lopatera and Stow House and Stow Grove Park forever. And so you've got a whole bunch of single-family homes all at once with some fresh water available. So that's kind of how that whole kind of quadrant happened. You know, I think about that part of Galita, and I think the biggest employer is Maravilla, just in terms of like the number of employees, it's probably Maravilla. Maybe, maybe one of the bank branches. But it's just not a job center. It's a residential center. And so, given that this is not a general plan, future of Galita kind of discussion, but a housing element discussion, you kind of have to just wrestle with the tools and the challenge that you have. And I feel like, you know, another site was brought up in terms of how bikeable, how far away by bike and other things. You know, I think, I think both of those sites have transit challenges. And, you know, I did some Googling too of like, okay, SBMTD and okay, you start and you arrive at a different time. So I started experimenting with how far to get from that neighborhood on Dara Road to Old Town, and how far to get to transform, kind of in the research park area, how long to get to Communa Real Marketplace. And it, in every instance, it involved 15 minutes or more of walking and over an hour of bus. So if you're able-bodied enough to bike, it's not too much of a burden. You can get to, you can get to Kyriel Center pretty quick. You can get to Gleea Library really fast. So there's definitely good things about the site. But there's also things about it that are less optimal compared to some of the other infill sites that we've considered. As things currently stand, it seems to me like we're largely not setting aside the vacant, large infill properties that are available to us. And so it's hard for me to then start saying, well, then let's treat this community differently or that community differently when we've largely seemed to be leaning towards, leaning into our principles about transit and vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions and putting people where the jobs and the housing and the services and the amenities and the parks are. So I'm still trying to decide, but I have a higher level of comfort right now with RM and RH than I did at the outset of this process, because it seems like we're making, or are on track to make some other decisions that make it easier for me to support it. If we were going to start saying, no, not that infill site, that's on a transit corridor near everything, but let's do this residential neighborhood, high-density, I would have a really hard problem supporting a housing element that treated land use that way. The way this seems to be going, I know I'm disappointing some people, but I have a higher level of comfort with going to RM or RH. And I'm still trying to decide which one. When we had this hearing before, I know it was probably 11 o'clock at night, but I said it's like, almost like a tie for me, and it still is. And I still want to hear from everybody. So thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Chapman?
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to echo Chair Smith's comments about the way that our city has been historically separated. And it's true for many American cities, separated by types of housing, by income and by demographics, and often split in half by the highway. And this is something that is happening here. And, you know, when it comes to affordability at a site like this, the single-family, the current designation will not be affordable to hardly anyone. I mean, there will be multimillion-dollar homes, I would imagine. The medium density, I'm no under any illusions that the units that aren't under the inclusionary ordinance would be cheap. The rents around here are bad. But it would be lower cost than the single-family homes. And then the high-density would probably be more affordable just because of the math of being able to build more units on the existing land. And I am similarly troubled by the lack of transit access and, you know, walkability and that this may generate some more car trips than other sites. But it's hard to ignore what I feel is a moral issue when it comes to trying to create neighborhoods that are more fair to everyone and give opportunities for those who don't have those opportunities to live in a nice neighborhood, especially for those with lower income. I mean, we talk about the evidence shows that when people come from, you know, a troubled background and have a opportunity to live in a more stable neighborhood, they are more likely to have a better outcome themselves rather than living in concentrated poverty. And that's something that we have an opportunity here to do, is give opportunities, especially for children with a nearby school. And I think that that really pushes me in the direction of the RH designation. Another issue is with the street safety. I hear everyone, I got involved in local government partly because of safety of those who are outside of a vehicle. I've been really concerned about how much we as a society accept people being killed by vehicles and think we should do more about it. And I'm with everyone who wants to try to make our streets safer, especially near schools. I don't know if the difference between medium and high-density, I don't know if the evidence is there to show whether that will affect that safety. I do think that there's a lot we can do and should be doing to improve safety. But I think that, I mean, it would be a bit ironic if building housing closer to a school made it more dangerous for children to go to school, considering that theoretically should allow children to safely walk to school without having to be, or having to be transported long distances. And if our, and if our streets don't accommodate that, then we need to make those changes. But sort of refusing to zone for housing won't make those changes to those streets. I think we need to do that in parallel. And so I don't see that as a reason not to, but I see that as something we have to do anyways. So yeah, so for these reasons and others, I'm leaning towards the RH designation. But I'm still curious to hear what the other councilors and commissioners have to say. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Richards?
Thank you. Well, when we last discussed this, I had expressed a preference for residential medium, RM, over the RH. And I continue to feel that way. I haven't changed my opinion. I do feel, I agree with what's been said regarding, you know, having a diversity of housing options and housing densities. And I see that, you know, we know that this area, the city, is primarily of single-family homes. I don't necessarily feel that that's a reason that it all needs to stay, single-family homes. But I'm just looking at the parcel, and yes, I have spent time on the ground. I've ridden my bike by here many times. I've walked this neighborhood. I've spent time around there. And just seeing it on the map and my experience of it is that, you know, it's in a neighborhood. It's in the midst of a neighborhood. It's not on the periphery. It's not on Cathedral Oaks. It's off of it. You have to go through the neighborhood roads to get, to get out and in and out. And I do see it as a very car-dependent area. It's not very accessible to public transportation. I think there may have been a public, an MTD line on, that ran past Cathedral Oaks in that area. I think it's been suspended indefinitely, so there's no indication of when, you know, that will be back. I do, I am concerned about its proximity to services, to businesses, to places that people want to go to shop and jobs as well. And I think, you know, we talked about our different planning principles that we're operating by. And I think being along a major transportation corridor is something that we have put out there as something that we're striving for. And that is not this. This is not on a major transportation corridor. And that's a concern for me, you know, just in general. I think it's going to generate more car traffic and car trips. So, I mean, for those reasons, and I continue to want to support the medium residential. I think that we are, we do need that. I think I would prefer to have that changed over the single-family zoning that's there. And I understand that the neighbors may be concerned even about a change to RM. But to me, that would still be preferable to the RH, and that would be my preference.
I have a question on, could you help me understand the difference? What RM would exactly mean on that piece of property? What would be looking at?
Mayor Prode, it's similar types of allowed uses, primarily residential. The real big difference between RM and RH would be the allowed density. So RM is 15 to 20 units per acre, so it caps at 20. RH caps at 30. So the potential development is really the difference between 20 and 30 units per acre.
Okay.
And to be more specific, I think we calculated out and estimated a total of 84 units under RM versus 127 for RH. It's a difference of 43 units.
Okay. I'm really struggling with this one. I didn't realize, and I think it's a good conversation about the schools, but I also didn't real, haven't asked that question about all the other schools that we're putting development either. We just don't know the capacity, where they're at. So I'm still struggling with this one, whether I would consider RM. So I'm still struggling with this one, whether I would consider RM or RH. Okay, I see Councilmember Kazin's hand up.
Yeah, just as a clarification, I guess, since that a lot of the community was sort of was advocating to go back to 12 units. And we already did the initiation of the general plan amendment. So my assumption is, tell me if this is correct, that if we didn't include it in this housing element, it doesn't sort of wipe out the previous action that we took. It's still, we still have that initiation of a general plan amendment, and you still have then the RM, the ability for the landowner to go forward with residential RM at 84 an acre. Is that right?
Not quite. It was initiated, but there was no action taken, so he would have to then move forward on his own process, separate from this process.
Okay, so in other words, he would bear the cost of doing the EIR and so forth, whereas when it's included in the housing element, we're taking that expense as part of our programmatic EIR.
Yes, he would still, the property owner would still have to go forward with a project-specific application once the rezon, if there is a rezon takes effect. So he'd still have a process to go through, but it wouldn't be the action of the rezoning.
Right, right. But the action that we took in terms of initiating the general plan amendment isn't swept aside. It's still there in a way. It just places the greater burden on the landowner to push it forward as opposed to us being the agent, right?
Yes. We wouldn't be able to count the units with the general plan amendment initiation. We would have to default to the existing zoning.
Right, okay. Because he hasn't gone forward further. And so what we're really, to the extent that there's, we're talking about then, if an RM versus a 127, that was for the high-density, is in essence, it's 43 units, and if we use that 43, do it with the 43, we get the full 127 to count towards our housing element. And if we don't, then we only have the 84, and that's not really terribly helpful. Is that the issue?
From a math perspective, yes, and if it was RM, it wouldn't count towards the lower income.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kiriakko?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to follow up on that last point, because why not do math at 10:15 at night? What is the difference, I know we have the, okay, this is what the RENA would be for high-density versus the RENA at medium-density, which I think for me is the choice, not staying the same. But what would be the actual lived difference based on our inclusionary housing policies at high-density versus medium-density in terms of what we would actually reasonably expect to net out? Keeping in mind that if it's medium-density and we're not having the assumption of the low-income units on the front end, there's less pressure for us to deliver those on the back end. And if we get inclusionary units, it helps us stay within our eventual buffer. So is it like we would get 10 more units with high-density that would be low-income than if it was moderate, or is it five? Like, can we do the math? I know that our inclusionary, I think it's like 5% very low, 5% low, 5 moderate, 5 above moderate-ish?
Yeah, I think you're on the right track. So the percentage would be the same. It would just be based on a different unit count. And if you're talking about a project like on the ground, what's proposed, we'd be making a lot of assumptions on that because there's a range for medium-density residential that goes up to 20, and there's a range for high-density residential that goes down to 20, while we can count it at 30 because the state lets us. We could get a similar project. So Andy's been running the numbers over here.
Yeah, I kind of need, I kind of need to know because I'm trying to figure out if the juice is worth the squeeze here, so to speak. I mean, in terms of what is actually going to be experienced by the community in terms of getting to some of the equity questions that have been raised here about making this a more inclusive community and creating more opportunity, I kind of want to have a sense of like, how much actual value are we creating with the moderate versus the high here, given that it's a four-acre parcel?
Councilmember Kiriakko, it's essentially 10% lower income in our inclusionary, so it's base 10. So 12.7, so there might be a cash out or fee out at some point, but 12.7 lower-income units with our inclusionary, if it's on high-density residential, and 8.4 units if it would be zoned moderate, and that would be at the max.
So we're talking about potentially a lot more units to get for more affordable for the people that would need it the most?
Yeah, that's how the math would check out.
All right, I got to think about how I feel about that a little bit more. Thank you.
Commissioner Maynard?
I want to come back to the transit question for a second. When I started working at UCSB, I looked at where I wanted to live, and I, for me, I wanted to be able to take the bus to campus. And so, I looked at the bus maps, and I tried to figure out where I could live. The only place I can live is on Hollister and be a transit commuter. And so, it kind of goes back to what Commissioner Chapman had said before around highway-splitting communities. And the way that we've designed Galida, anything north of 101 is not transit-accessible from a bus perspective. Anything south of there, you can. Are we ready to say we're not going to do affordable housing north of 101? To me, that's too tough, that's too tough to accept in terms of really thinking about the spread. I'm not ready to give up everything north of 101. And I think in terms of thinking about trying to build out housing, trying to build out transit, trying to provide transit opportunities, I have had friends that have been lower-income that have found a room to rent somewhere north of 101 and heard their stories of the two-hour bus commutes every day trying to get through. But one of the difficulties is we'll never have bus transit north of 101 if we don't have higher-density housing north of 101 that will want to use that transit. And so, we're following our own tail in terms of that. And so, that's something I challenge, I struggle with. To speak to some of the other comments around even just consistency of how we talk about this, the city of Galida very publicly chastised the county for not citing more housing in Montecito, in Hope Ranch, and in single-family housing within the county. This is our microcosm of that. The one thing that I do think in terms of just the distances for this, yes, it's a 20-minute walk from Dara Road to the central downtown of Cai Real. It's a very pleasant walk. It is, you've got lovely sidewalks, you're not crossing any major highways. In terms of transit accessibility, again, comparing this to some of what we've looked at upzoning in the northwest of Galida, much, much more accessible than other sites we're looking at upzoning. So that, I struggle with this. I'll pause there.
I'll just make a real quick comment on, I sit on the MTD board, and I can tell you that, you know, that line, one of the lines that went on Cathedral Oaks was suspended because of lack of ridership. If there was more riders, they would not, they would restart it, I do believe. It was just, had very poor ridership. So I think with housing in that area, it might encourage more riding. Definitely might. Anybody else before we do, I guess, a straw vote? Commissioner Fullerton?
Yeah, I have to say, for me, this was probably the most challenging one, and I go back and forth. There is already the proposal to change it to RM, so that was something that was probably more likely to happen at some point. But then again, it sounds like the owner has owned this property for a long time, and nothing could happen for a long time as well. So I go back and forth, like, is there really that much of a difference between RM and RH? You have 40 additional units. It's hard to know the impact of those 40 additional units. I mean, it seems like it is going to change. The neighborhood would change either way with RM or RH. So I guess, I'm still undecided. I could kind of go either way, supporting RM or RH.
Mayor Protam?
Yeah, I just had a question. It's my understanding that that general plan initiation for this parcel has expired. Is that correct? So I was looking it up. It looked like it was at least three years ago, and I think that's beyond our timeframe.
So, Mayor and Mayor Protam, in fact, there were extensions of that because there were partial submittals on the application, so it has not expired yet. But otherwise, you would be correct. The original council action, I believe, was in July of 2020, which would have been three years ago, but there were partial submittals that allowed the, to keep the general plan amendment initiation open.
And can you remind me, the general plan initiation was needed in order to change it to RM, or was it to change it to allow for the senior care facility?
To change it to RM.
I see, okay, thank you.
I did also just have a couple responses to something that was said here with regard to bus service in the northwest. There is a bus that runs in the northwest, the 23, so it might not go directly to UCSB, but there's a connection at Stork. So I just want to be clear about that, that it made it sound like there was no bus service north of the 101. And I know that that is not true, and I know that there is a line that runs in that area frequently. And, yeah, I just wanted to mention that.
I guess just a quick comment. When I think about the Stowe Canyon neighborhood and Dara Road and the kind of that pocket of homes that's near Kellogg School, I have a lot of thoughts. Images of Montecito and Hope Ranch aren't that image. To the extent that Galida has that kind of community, I'd say it's the gated community, the bluffs. That's, to me, the closest thing I think we have to Hope Ranch or Montecito in western Galida. You know, and then the unincorporated area, I'd say Mountain View, the area by Mountain View School is kind of a close second. You know, I look at that neighborhood and I see kind of like, it's kind of a mix of retirees and young families, working folks and retired folks, not really like second and third home folks. But I agree with the larger point that I believe you're making, which is just to the extent that there is privilege within Galida on a larger scale than just one subdivision. You know, I will agree with that point that that, this is an area that has more affluence than some other parts of Galida, such as Old Town, which I represent. I just don't know if there's enough data for me to make the decision based on just that data point. But I think it's a good point, and I don't say that to be argumentative, but just because I guess I couldn't help myself. Sorry.
Well, I'm leaning towards RH. I think it's needed. We need the numbers. I know that it might, it will change the dynamics of the neighborhood, but I look at other neighborhoods that are being changed as well. And then I look at the need, and what's really needed is, you know, of course, I would never think that going back to the 12 above-moderate income homes is appropriate for this site because that's, when we were doing our last cycle of RENA, that's all we could seem to encourage people to do is just above-moderate, and we had, the numbers were higher. And where we really need homes are low-income housing. So I'm supporting RH, and we'll see where it goes from here, but that's kind of my, it's a need, you know.
I guess one question I have is, at what point are we looking at what our tally is so that we can decide whether or not we can dial back on any of these? I mean, it seems like that would be a good time of the evening to do that.
Because we still have to do one more after this Kenwood, right? So I don't know if we want to look at it now, or...
Madam Mayor, we have a tally available, and can we put that on screen?
So we'll need to have presentation for Andy Newkirk.
Oh, so we're going to move on to Kenwood? Is that what we're doing before we make any decisions on this?
Yeah, the timing is important for this discussion, so if we show the tally now...
Again, we don't make good decisions after, it's 10:30 now. And I said I would only go till 10:00 tonight, so I'm already changing my mind on that.
Commissioner Maynard?
I may not be popular for saying this, but it is 10:30. We did say we're going to try to end by 10:00. I know there's a number of public comments slips still for sites that either were discussed at the last site or were not discussed and folks wanted to raise. And then there is still the issue of how do we look at the total tallies and where do we pull back? And for me, I'm not comfortable having that conversation, but only while sitting on the Dara project. If we're going to talk about then, like, rolling back some of this, that needs to be a conversation that then we can sort of look at the whole set and where the densities we have throughout the city are. I don't know that we can finish this tonight. That's...
That's what I'm concerned about, too. But we'd have, if we don't finish this night, we're going to have to bring it back, like, I think Thursday. I don't, I mean, we're going to have to do it. I know Mr. Imhoff is looking at me like, oh.
But we were, Mayor, we were just having a quick sidebar discussion. I mean, one option here is to take your direction now and move forward with the draft as we have it. That's, and we really, we have a lot of information already. I wasn't clear if you needed to see the tallies in order to render a final decision on Dara.
How could we see the tallies until we've done Kenwood? And then there's other topics, too.
Madam Mayor, we have a running tally, so we can show you the running total, and you can see where we are, if that helps you in your decision on this project.
Okay.
No.
If I may, I'll just say, before we move on, I want to make sure that we bring back Councilmember Reyes Martin before we have any of that discussion, so...
Yeah, yeah. But weren't you going to do the straw vote first? Excuse me, Councilmember Kazin?
Yeah, I mean, I wanted, Council, it's getting late. So, Commissioner, Commissioner or Vice, I don't know, Maynard. Is it Commissioner, Vice Chair? Anyway, her point was well-taken, that when we look at the running tally, it's not us to look at the impacts on Dara. We made, we voted on all the others without having to do some sort of running tally to evaluate it. So we evaluate the item and make a vote on it, and then go back and reassess. But it's not a special provision that exempts Dara from having to be subject to discussion or vote.
Go ahead.
I would just note, I'm not sure, I think we're all interested in a global discussion, but I, again, we do have to be mindful of all the conflict issues in that discussion, so I wasn't sure if the city attorney had any concerns with that. That's one of the, that's one of the things we're having to balance. But I would see if we could do a straw vote, at least on this item, and then...
And then move on.
And then sort the other stuff out.
Yeah. Are you okay with that?
I would just say that also coming back for one more meeting would give the city attorney a chance to come up with a good way to help guide us in being able to have that larger conversation. that larger conversation, whereas trying to rush that tonight is going to be more problematic in my mind.
Okay. So I think we'll do a straw vote and we'll start Jennifer Fullerton, Commissioner Fullerton.
I support RM.
I'll support the RH option.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
In light of the discussion this evening, I'm supportive of the initial staff, staff report to RM.
Okay. Ms. Maynard?
I will continue to support RH.
Ms. Miller?
Yes, in light of the discussion tonight and based on aesthetics for the neighborhood, I would say RM. I support RM.
Okay. Council, Mayor Protem?
RM?
I will do RH. Councilmember Kiriakko?
It's a tough vote, but I'm going to say RM.
And Councilmember Kazdin?
RH.
Okay. Okay, so it's RM.
What happens with a tie?
Oh, was it a tie? Well, it has to be at least three...
The two councils are separate. Yeah, so, oh, we don't have to...
Yeah, I can't answer that.
I mean, it sounds like it's a planning commission, RM, and a council split.
Well, we can look at it and consider when we come back, if we're making adjustments. It's, I don't know, we'll see where we are.
So that sound appropriate to staff to, I don't know how to handle this. Legal? Ms. Kai?
Well, there is a tie. It looks like on council, it's 2-2, and on PC, it's 3-2 for RM. Council, it's 2-2 split. I would, I would recommend that we continue to consider this as we think about having the next meeting. There, this is, so, this is on the alternatives list? No, it's on the candidates list.
It's in both. The, the properties in both lists. We considered it on July 20th, and then we're reconsidering it tonight.
Yeah. So I can't say I run, I can render the decision at this moment, but I, I would encourage us to think about this in the holistic terms, as you guys have discussed about wanting to have that conversation. And certainly Commissioner, Chairman, Vice Chair Maynard's point is well taken. We'll have to think about how to agendize this next time to be able to allow some ability to talk about the list as a whole.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just, just, just something to think about as we kind of process that information. We're not at the end of the road, you know, regardless of kind of where this gets shaken out. We're going to get a 60-day review period and a letter from the state. If, if it ends up going into the state as medium density and the state says, we still feel you need to have more viable sites, and they see a vacant site there, that's it, not high density, that could be high density and the owner wants high density, then the state could basically tell us, like they've done to a lot of other jurisdictions with a lot of other HCD orders, you need to do this project as a particular type of project. And then that would sort of be like the state telling us. Just, just, just something to think about.
I'm not sure that there's a way around talking about the sites one by one with the conflict. I'll be interested to hear what our city attorney's office advice is. But it seems to me because of the conflicts, we're going to have to continue to segment and, and that, that we may not have a global discussion, although we can inform your discussion of the individual sites if you wish with the running tally.
Okay.
I would agree with that assessment that there, there are different ways to agendize this, but the segmentation, the discussion of the properties to allow for the conflicts to be, you know, conflicted members to recuse is very real. We have to comply with the state law. So, you know, in discussion, you can look at the tally list and think about in general, broadly, the principles that are being applied. But we can't, in, if we're going to talk about two properties at once, then we do need to allow for conflicted members to recuse.
Correct. I know we have one speaker that I said could go at the very end. I, Frank?
Yeah, we also have four speakers regarding Kenwood.
I thought we were going to, are we going to come back and just deal with Dara and Kenwood or, and any, aren't, won't there be more proposed ideas that, that somebody could come up with that's not on the list? I mean, wasn't that how we were going to end it?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the, the hearing bodies can bring up other sites if they would like to, or other sites that have been raised in public comment. And we may need to discuss if we're going to return, when that would occur. The most likely opportunity would be this Thursday, if that's available, because we as staff really have to adhere to our timeframes and get this off to the state.
Right. Excuse me?
Should we get Luce back for this discussion? I don't know. I have a question.
I'm just wondering if we should bring Councilmember Reyes Martin back.
Oh, for the whole discussion, yes, 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 yes. I thought you said something else. I'm sorry. I'm not good after.
Use this opportunity, Rob. I'll be right back.
Did you want, Frank, did you want to talk tonight or do you want to come back on Thursday? Because I know you've been waiting to say something.
Thursday, it's up to you.
Thursday? Then you come right in the beginning. You have to be here at the beginning. Okay, all right. I can't hear you. I'm... Did you say something about validating its parking?
Yeah.
I know. I thought I heard that. So we're going to bring Luce back in. Right. Right. And I know that there's some, I've heard that there'd be possibly some Councilmember that wants to talk about adding. So we will be coming back, Ms. Reyes Martin. We didn't finish. So I'm looking at my colleagues, it's Thursday, going to work. It's good with me.
Mayor, we're going to just check and double check that the council chambers is available on Thursday.
Oh, that's a good idea.
There is a, there is a community conversation on homelessness. No irony there.
But not here.
At the Galita Valley Library on my schedule for 5:30 to 7:00. But, you know, this is my job, so I'll, I'll report to duty.
I'm on that committee, but I, I would be here, definitely.
I don't know if I can make it. I think we're supposed to be driving then.
Oh. Councilmember Kazdin? Did you say something? I didn't hear it.
Yeah, I don't know that I'll, I'll be available.
Thursday?
Still on vacation as we speak, and we might be driving.
Well, I can give you some dates that the council chambers is available, and then we can go from there. So if you'd, if you'd like me to read off some dates, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
The council chamber is available this Thursday, July 27th, and again on Monday, July 31st, and then Tuesday, August 1st, and Wednesday, August 2nd, and Thursday, August 3rd, or the week of August 7th through the 10th. And I'll emphasize that the sooner is, is better for, for our schedule purposes.
And we should be respectful to Councilmember Kazdin will be driving on Thursday, so we shouldn't be looking at that date. Do the other days work?
31st works for me. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah. That doesn't work for me. I'm gone all next week.
That's right, you shared that before.
I can do Zoom. I can do Zoom. After the 1st, I'll be on Zoom for two weeks.
So we need to do it before the 1st, definitely.
I mean, I, I could do Zoom after the 1st. So I could do Zoom on the second or third, those times. Or I could be in person on the 31st. I could not do the 1st because I will be in a plane on the 1st.
I can do any of those dates.
I can do it.
I'm available for any of them.
31st works.
You can do Zoom on the 31st?
I can do the 31st and the 1st.
You could do the 31st and the 1st?
Mm-hmm. What were the other dates?
It sounds like everybody can do the 31st in some way, and all of the dates will require one of us to be on Zoom. I think, is, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I think the 31st is the first available date that we're all available.
I think we should go for that.
Yeah.
And then you'll be on Zoom. Okay, you'll be, just have to raise your hand to make sure. All right, so.
Can I just ask you a question? So just so I'm clear, the, the conversation that we're envisioning, is that a focused conversation or is it we can talk about anything and everything and possible straw votes changing things?
So Madam Mayor and Councilmember Kiriakko, we would initially continue the discussion of the candidate sites, revisiting candidate sites, any conclusionary, conclusion discussion on Dara Road, and then Kenwood, or any other sites you wish to discuss. And, and then following that, you could raise other sites that you heard about in public comment or that you wish to bring up and discuss those in a segmented way. We'd have to look to the city attorney for advice on how, if at all, it's possible to have a global discussion. And based on the, the prior, my prior understanding, I don't know of a way that that's possible. So we may be left with just a segmented discussion. Or, or as Ms. Kai indicated, we'd have to allow for recusal if you talk about more than one site at, at a time.
Okay.
Is it possible for the people who waited more than five hours to do public comment, to do public comment?
Isn't that the idea?
I, I would actually support that recommendation.
Do you allow the people who submitted slips for this meeting to talk during the meeting?
What, what, I'm sorry, can you come up to the microphone so everybody can hear you? And what side are you, are you, speak?
All we wanted to say was that we submitted slips to speak this evening. Is it normal to prevent certain people from speaking and allow other people speaking, speak during?
We just haven't gone on to Kenwood and, and to, if we allow you...
I'm not talking about where, where you are. I'm just saying that we submitted slips to speak and you're going to prevent us from speaking. You're going to, you're going to close down the session and ask us to go home. Is that, you feel that's fair?
I don't think that's fair, but I don't think it's fair that we try and make a decision at almost 11 o'clock. We don't do well. It's not to your advantage, to be honest with you. And if this council wants to continue and go on, that's fine, but I have to recuse myself. So I can't talk about Kenwood.
Well, the, the point is that we, I mean, like, we got here at 5:30, put our slips in at 5:30, we waited five hours, and now I feel that we're just going to get dismissed and that a date is not even set. So I don't know why I have to...
We, we did set the date, 30, the 31st. We have set 31st.
Well, I still think that...
Can we, can we advance the people who were meant to speak tonight to, towards the top of the meeting?
The, the first thing went on the topic would, on, on the 31st would be Kenwood, wouldn't it?
Mayor Perotti, I, I think there's a few things going on. Right now, there's a, a potential action to move, to continue the date of today's hearing to Thursday, no, Monday, July 31st at 5:30 PM. So this council and the planning commission can make a motion and vote on that motion. So that will close out that issue.
Okay.
And then we could address the, allow for public comment on the rest of the public comments who, slips that have been submitted, which we're obligated to allow in any public meeting.
That was our point. This, you're obligated to do it. And you're, but you're not even addressing that. That's, that was my point. That's my only point, okay?
And, and so then I think we can, that, you know, we'll come back with the issues to discuss for the next meeting.
Okay. So public comment. But, so are we taking public comment on every, and everybody, I'm, I'm still...
Mayor, it's up to you whether you'd like to hear public comment on the remaining...
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I, I do appreciate that folks have been waiting, knowing that we will be continuing this discussion and we will not be talking at length about that, the property. I do think it's important for folks to be allowed to read their comment into the record tonight, and then they can also come back on the 31st. But since they have been waiting to at least be able to read their comment into the record...
I'll be fine with that, but let's do the vote first to extend the meeting until, continue the meeting on the 31st. Take a motion for that?
Yes.
So who would like to make the motion? And then we'll do, is, is that the correct way to do it? Motion it and then?
Yes, and then have a vote.
Okay.
I will move that we continue the meeting to July 31st.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Can I just clarify? Does that mean that the meeting, but after that vote, we'll continue hearing public comment this evening?
Correct, yeah. We just want to close out the issue of when we want to come back to discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Okay, I'll be starting with the planning commission.
Okay.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Fullerton?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Maynard?
Yes.
And Chair Smith?
Yes.
And now the city council. Councilmember Kiriakko?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kazdin?
Aye.
Mayor Protempore Richards?
Yes.
And Mayor Perotti?
Aye. Okay. Okay, so if we're going to have speakers on Kenwood, do I need to go now? Okay, all right. Okay, we'll turn this meeting over to Mayor Protem.
Okay, thank you.
Let me go.
And are all of the speakers for Kenwood or are there other properties as well?
We have four speaker slips, all for Kenwood. And then Mr. Ariando already said that he would be back for the 31st.
Okay.
Just, just as a point of formality, aren't we supposed to read into the record the, the reason for recusals?
For this particular recusal, because it's not a, a, a conflict under the Political Reform Act, that declaration does not need to be made.
Okay, I think we'll hear the first speaker, please.
Our first speaker is Amy Deal.
Not feeling like my freshest self, but I'm, I'll come back to the next one. I just, my name's Amy Deal. I was born in Galita. I live in Galita. I work in Galita. I love this community and I deeply care about what's happening right now. I came to the rezoning workshop last week and I left super disappointed. And I was disappointed because I felt like the decisions were rushed. They were the very first decisions and that there was a lack of research. And there were a lot of questions that were posed, and then a straw vote was taken, and there weren't a lot of answers. And that's not how I expected my city to take these issues. These are permanent issues. These are serious issues. These are issues that impact people that live in neighborhoods, and I think they need to be taken seriously. So I want to address Kenwood. In addressing that, I also want to let you know, if you're not familiar with the area, that 325 units have been proposed within a half a mile of one another. That's the two that are at the former Happy Harry's, now the One Stop Liquor Shop, and Kenwood Village. That's all within a half a mile of each other on a piece of Caire Real that is very well-traveled. Dos Pueblos High School is right off there. It's a main thoroughfare to get to the high school. Brandon Elementary School is there. And it's Mr. Toad's Wild Ride on Caire Real in the mornings and the, in the afternoons. And if you're not familiar with that, it doesn't work right now because school's not in session. But please come and travel that road in, with the morning traffic, with all the families that are coming and going. We have, we have teen drivers. We have a lot of bicyclists. We have kids going to the elementary school on their bikes. We have high schoolers on their bikes. elementary school on their bikes, we have high schoolers on their bikes. I have witnessed a bike accident between a little boy and a car, and he was, it was the boy's fault, but he was just trying to get through the cars because he was going to be late to school, and he was hit by a car. So I just want you to consider that putting 325 units within a half a mile on a small, narrow road is a dangerous prospect, and I'm very concerned about my neighbors and my own family being in there. So Kenwood, Kenwood Village, it's too big for that site, and I think that it needs to be considered to somewhere that has a road that can handle it. We can't expand the road unless we expand it right out onto the 101. So I don't know what kind of options that we should, we have, but I think you need to really consider the safety of all the schoolchildren and families that live there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is April Reed. And if there are any members of the Zoom webinar who wish to speak, please do raise your hand, we'll call on you.
Hello, my name is April Reed. I live at 15 Baker Lane, which borders what's supposed to be Kenwood Village. I just want to say for the record that I am not opposed to building in general on Kenwood property, I never have been. There are multiple problems with even just 60 units, much less 284, which is well over four times the 60-unit monstrosity that was proposed. I want to reiterate what the last speaker said. Traffic in bike lanes are extremely dangerous. It's a narrow road, there's no room for error. You got Cali Real on one side with housing, you got the freeway on the other side. When I was driving in here today, I just want you all to know, I want you to all to go by this area. Block away on Cali Real, there's a bike where a little boy was hit, and there are flowers, they're still fresh, on, on the chain link fence. And I would like every one of you to go by there and justify this dangerous area, and then put more housing on this area. It's already too dangerous as it is. In terms of the animals that are there, there are snakes that are there that are considered sensitive in terms of the endangered species list. I'm not talking about by the, the creek across the entire property from where I live, I'm talking about on the property and from where I live. There are endangered species, or I don't know if you want to call them endangered, but sensitive species. There are many other animals, I think I wrote you all a list of the animals that are there. Those animals are not going to survive. I'm sorry, but they're just not. I don't know how important that is to you, to save endangered species, or I keep saying that, but sensitive species, I think that's very important. Also, this is, part of this is agricultural land. I know that the owner claims it's commercial, but I checked with the city, and I checked with them today, and it's agricultural land, and I read that you guys were not promoting agricultural land for rezoning. This is the only one that I can see that's listed as agricultural, and it should continue to be agricultural. I have a lot more to say, and I'll probably say it next time, or write something. I wrote a very lengthy letter, and I guess I don't write very well, because I probably don't communicate very well, but I'm doing the best I can. So for those reasons, I think it should stay not high density. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Bronwyn Moore, followed by Timothy Bullock.
Well, thank you very much for taking, for giving me the time and giving the rest of us the time to speak about Kenwood Village, and I wasn't aware of the other property. So I'm a teacher, I've lived in Galita for over 20 years. I teach at the City College, and I have taught at Dos Pueblos prior to that. And when I was first hired at City College, I didn't think about where I should live for, you know, dry, you know, comfort reasons. I, I bought the, at the bottom of the market, and that's what this neighborhood is. Aside from Old Town, this was the bottom of the market when I bought housing 20 years ago, and I don't think it's changed that much. I don't think it's a coincidence that there are less speakers for this village, and I really appreciated a lot of the equity talk that was, that was given earlier. So I'm sorry, I don't know all of your names. So one council member said, it's important to try to make street safety. And this putting all of those units, 284 units bordering Caeran Real, that's not considering safety of the children and the families that would live there, and the general impact of traffic. It's a nightmare, and in fact, one of the Dara community members described Caeran Real as a nightmare. And I think if the, if the roadworks person was still here, I'd really like to ask him about safety records for Caeran Real. You're putting all those families there, you know, and it just, it just boggles my mind that anyone would consider putting that many units in already a high-density overloaded neighborhood. Walkability in my neighborhood, so I live on Tuolumne, and by the way, the only reason I'm here is because we were looking at Nets Store, because the, there was a stray dog. That's the only reason I know that this is going on right now. So in terms of email barrage, didn't happen, because I'm actually a pretty well-informed person, didn't know about this meeting, didn't know about the last meeting. There is no walkability in that neighborhood. You're putting all those families in of, so it's 284 units, that's 568 to 1,136 fam, people in that neighborhood, when you can, already can't walk there. I did not let my high school, Roan High School, six-foot-four son walk to DP from Tuolumne because it was too dangerous. I drove him, and I'm not a helicopter mom, but we actually know, I know, in the 20 years of teaching at City College, I have known four college students die on Caeran Real. Still upsets me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker slip is for Timothy Bullock.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for staying late and working tonight, really appreciate it. I live on Tuolumne as well. The Kenwood property backs up onto Tuolumne, as you probably know, and there's a path there, a walking path between the Kenwood property and Tuolumne. Tuolumne Road, Drive, sorry, is, has a lot, high traffic through it because it's kind of an extension of Elwood Station Road, and people use that to get into the heart of our neighborhood, as well as to get to Dos Pueblos High School and a couple other schools that are nearby. So we do experience a lot of, through traffic in our area. We also have some parking issues on the, the street because some houses have, have a few more people in them. But in general, it's, it's good neighborhood. I'm just a little bit worried about the impact of this large development right behind us because there have been a few red flags in the past when other developers have had to try, have proposed some housing developments there. One is that walking path, it's not really clear what's going to happen with that, and two is the parking issue. People have mentioned, I don't, we weren't here for the last meeting, but people have mentioned that they think that overflow parking will end up on Tuolumne, and I don't think we can really handle that. I'm, the point I'm trying to make is that Tuolumne is kind of a sensitive road in a way, I don't know, I don't really have the metrics to give you on why that is, but it's just with the, the amount of traffic, the excess parking, the people who live there, I just think it's gonna, there's going to be some tension there with that many people placed in, in a nearby location, and with that kind of overflow, those kind of overflow issues. But with regards to segregation, which was already brought up, so I'll just mention that on both sides of us, our direct neighbors are Latinx families, and this is not a segregated neighborhood by any means. So I don't know if that figures into your calculations, but we, I guess I'll, I'll stop there, and again, I just really appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there are no hands raised on Zoom at this time.
Okay, thank you. And for those public commenters, I want to thank you for sticking to the end and for persevering with us tonight. And I'll say this thing for our staff as well, thank you. Can we, do, is Mayor Perotti here still, or, okay?
So are we at the point where I say, meeting adjourned?
I think that's your last duty.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for hanging in there. Meeting adjourned.